Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay, we didn't receive any public comments, so we'll move on to three consent agenda. A is personnel recommendations. Would anyone like to remove an item? Okay, I'll take a motion to approve three A.
Some moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? See none, motion carries on to four action items. A is district positions. I'll take a motion to approve.
Some moved.
A second?
Second.
Okay, now discussion.
Um, we've had some conversations about this, and so the position that's in there, this is because anytime we actually bring a new position forward, the board has to approve a position. Um, and so in the explanation, you will see some positions that we are eliminating to create this position. So from a fiscal piece of it, there is neutral and there may be a gain on it, so there is no fiscal impact to the district as we move forward because of some of the other positions that we are eliminating and redistributing some of those duties. Um, and to provide us some leadership as it relates to data, our continuous improvement, analyzing it, and some of the services related to that. It's been sort of not as cohesive as it could be, and so when we look at the systems that need to drive our continuous improvement, putting all of those together instead of just separate people who might be in separate roles, it needs to act a little bit more cohesively as a system, I think. If anything, I've noticed it over the last six weeks as we've looked at trying to look at survey data, get surveys out, analyze it, and trying to say, what is that data really telling us? And really understanding the need for having accurate data and making sure we're capturing the voice and input for what our stakeholders are saying. And so that, to do it right and get it accurately done in, and is important for us. And so we've really not had anybody that manages that, and there are some, you know, elements that we've been looking at as the board has with those metrics that we'll start using for a dashboard with our continuous improvement.
Okay. Do you have any questions? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? See none, motion carries on to five. Discussion is Fall 2020 reopen, and I will be virtual learning survey results, two will be reopen Fall 2020 parent survey results, and three is overview of reopen Fall 2020 plan.
So previously, I had shared with the board, um, the virtual, virtual learning surveys, so I will be referencing those. We won't spend a lot of time going through every single document, but if you wanted to look those up. Um, what I will share with you is that tomorrow, I plan on sending out a video message to our parents and sharing with them the virtual learning surveys, um, so they haven't, so they can look at what the surveys are. Also, the, the summary of our reopening survey, which is later on the agenda, um, and talking about next steps and what that looks like, a draft of that. So that's going to go out to our parents, but we needed to, as a board, talk about where we are in a lot of those things. So just wanted to share that. So, um, parents haven't seen that. Our educators last week had, as we moved an August Professional Learning Day into July, so we could talk about this and start making some decisions and moving forward with what actions had to be happening. Last week, we met with our educators and spent a half a day looking at these surveys and what did they tell us? If people are going to spend time, our students and parents, in completing a survey and providing a lot of comments, it's up to us then to read that feedback and really say, what does that mean? What implications does it have us, have for us moving forward? So, um, I will share a little bit of the survey, um, but just more or less the processing and what next steps there are for that. So, um, our parent surveys, as a reminder, we gave those to K-12 parents. Um, most of the questions were the same on those surveys, although they were a little bit different at the elementary around, uh, feedback and grading because that happened a little bit differently. We also know that elementary parents are probably a little bit more in tune to what was happening during virtual learning and sometimes before because our youngest learners needed that parental involvement in order to do the learning. And so sometimes to ask a high school parent about some very specific things that were, they may not have had that level of knowledge during virtual learning. So we made a few differences, but we tried to make them as close as we could. Parents, if they had a child at each level, would have to complete a separate survey. Um, and so when you look at the number of participants, they are not unduplicated amounts. Um, and so it was hard for us to capture how many households or how many students or how many parents, because I could have, if I had a child at each level, maybe I only wanted to do the elementary and middle and never did the high school one. So, um, we didn't collect any demographic data there that allowed us to determine what percentage of households completed it. So there was a, a section on each survey in which they could rate sections. Um, some of them talked about before virtual learning and after virtual learning and compared them to see if we improved or didn't improve, because I think that was important. Some areas showed an increase, some stayed the same, and some got worse. And so I think it was important, and then asked them in the open-ended parts of the comments, um, what, you know, what specifically? So communication, was it the frequency? Was it the message? Was it, you know, whatever that might be, so we can further elaborate. So there were a lot of comments, and anytime you go through comments, coding that takes a long time to put them into categories that make sense. And so, um, for each of the parent surveys, there was a quantitative review, and then we took all of the comments and coded them, whether they were favorable, unfavorable, or neutral, because parents could choose to say whatever they wanted to in open-ended comments. In fact, they could say something that had nothing to do with the question at all. And so we really wanted to be able to say, when people were given the opportunity, what did they choose to talk about? Because they could sort of put those words in there. I do find it interesting sometimes, you know, and I think one of the learnings I've had, um, when people put comments, you know, sometimes they use very strong adjectives or lots of punctuation marks. Sometimes that, that social media thing we see when people are, you know, adding emotion to a comment, but when you get to the question that correlates to that, how did you rate something? Sometimes, if you would have looked at the comment, you would have been absolutely sure that person either really loved something or really disliked it, but then when you looked at they rated it, it was very interesting. So I think it's just a good reminder that sometimes what people put in words as a comment, when having to actually give it a rating, you know, it's sort of like when you rate a movie, you might give it five stars, but might, all the comments you might say about it are, you know, what's wrong with it. And so I think it was a good balance that we had some quantitative data where people actually had to give it a rating, and then also some comments that let them elaborate a little bit more. So those were our parent surveys. I think we had a pretty good participation. Um, remember, this happened right in the last, the very beginning of June, so it's been about five to six weeks ago since parents provided this, right at the end of it. So, um, we did have, uh, they were in it, immersed in it from March. We did a mid-year, um, mid-virtual learning feedback about what's not going well. That was all qualitative feedback comments, and we used that to help structure some of the changes that we made mid-week, or mid-virtual learning. I call it mid-week. It seems like one big, long week. Um, so if you look at the virt, I'm just going to show a little bit of the parent surveys, so, um, we can talk about that, and then I'll open it up for discussion about some interesting things, and then what our educators saw when they did that. So I'm going to call up the quantitative pieces of the survey. Oh, sorry. When we, my mouse wants to connect from my office here. So if you look at the number of surveys that were completed for each level, we had 279 elementary parents, 207 middle school parents, and 202 high school parents. Again, those are not, they could have been duplicative parents that filled it out at each level. And then per grade level as they reported. So that just gives you a participation. Um, I'm not going to go through, what I think is probably the easiest to look at is some of the, um, averages that we look at when we look at before and after. So if we look at how elementary parents feel about district communication, um, before, uh, virtual learning, they gave it a 4.62 for a rating, and after, 4.68, slight increase, but probably not statistically significant when you look at that, so not a lot when you look at some of those changes. One of the things we noticed is that we needed to be more clear on what is district communication. In our minds, it was letters from the superintendent or things like the connect. Uh, from the comments, that was not clear. They thought district communication was anything that came out from the district as a whole, not separating district-level communication. So, in any future, um, surveys, we need to be clear about what we mean, like, for example, you know, bulletins from the superintendent or, or whatever it might be. So, it, it wasn't clear, um, in, in that. And, and that's fine, um, but I think that that was one of it. Building-level communication, again, sometimes that got confused based on the comments about building could have been the teacher was at the building versus the principal. And so that was really, in our minds, when we talked about building, most of that came out from the principal. And we could have been clearer about what was meant by that. And then the teacher, that was pretty clear for, for the most part. And so when we look at all of these, um, you know, elementary tend to have a little bit higher ratings overall. They tended to go up a little bit during virtual learning when you look at elementary parents. Uh, middle school parents, um, not necessarily, they go down in all of the categories. So, um, that's their parents, which is interesting because they got the same district-level communication. And so, you know, it's just one of those things, looking at that level, how did that, how did that pair or match up with building and teacher? Like, those were sort of a combination in how things, um, sort of flowed from a level. And, um, same thing for, you know, high school parents, pretty flat, if you will, um, when you look at. So not significant changes where people felt, uh, before and after on any of those. The charts, I think, help put it in perspective. You know, when you look at where people rate it from very poor to poor to fair to good to very good, you know, the, it does tend to visually, if you look at it, look at the good and above. There's a lot of bars in that as compared to that. Sometimes you don't pick that up when you look at the statistical charts. Um, and then the middle school parents, and then, you know, high school parents when you look at that. So, um, that's just related to communication. Obviously, we would do a much more, um, in-depth, a survey if we really get at communication to, to get at some of those factors. This was just to really talk about the before and after pieces of it. Parental involvement, I, I think our biggest question here was, did parents feel like they had to get more involved during virtual learning because they were that teacher to some extent? And did that, was that more evident at the elementary level than it was at middle and high school? And so I think that you saw that. And so when you look at the numbers there, obviously, zero means I had the same level of involvement, one means I had to get more involved, and negative one means I was less involved in certain aspects of that. And so this looks at each of the different levels. And so assist my child with their homework, we would expect that to be higher at the elementary level, which it is, but it was higher for all levels, but much higher, I mean, higher, I wouldn't say much, because statistically, I wouldn't say it was much, um, for our elementary parents. And so, the, you know, advocate for the school and district, um, elementary parents pretty much were neutral on that. Interestingly, you know, our high school parents said they were much less, and most of them, their comments were because there weren't sporting or musical events or concerts to go to. And in their minds, that's how they advocated for the district. Um, you know, there's not a PTO or things like that. So it made sense when you read the comments about why the score is there. Where it's really hard to advocate, it wasn't that they support the district, it, it was in the question, how do you advocate for the district? So it made sense when you looked at some of the comments. Um, the other pieces about the academic feedback and grading, um, when we looked at that as far as before and after, again, you see green being elementary here. So, two means that it was, you know, between two means that it was, uh, higher, um, during virtual learning. So, elementary tends to have a, a much higher, you know, vent on that. Um, parents are more involved. They maybe paid more attention to some of those things. Sometimes it's a matter of kids in middle school and high school share less, and so parents are getting it second-hand. Sometimes parents see it firsthand. But when you look at some of the, um, the pieces that, that, that we were looking at here about communicating learning goals, um, as we looked at elementary, middle, and high school, you know, comparable with elementary being a little bit higher. So one of the things we did with grading, and, and Lynn will talk a little bit more about that, is at our elementary level, the changes is that we relied a lot on the narrative piece at the elementary level, so teachers had to explain the growth of learning that they saw. We still provided the standards-based letter, but we really felt that the narrative was going to help the teacher this next year to really figure out what the teacher actually observed. So we asked parents, you know, did you like the narrative? Did you like a letter grade? Would you only want to go to letter grades? You know, only 5% of the parents said they would want to switch to just letter grades. Um, our largest group, as you can imagine, is saying both. We liked the narrative piece, and we also liked getting a letter grade. It gave us a more, um, you know, complete picture of how our child was doing. Middle and high school, um, this is the communication to parents, because we felt at that point that parents were less directly involved. Students could independently do some of this week. So, um, how did, how did this work? Um, we still should have been communicating to parents about academic progress. Maybe they weren't directly assisting their child, but there still should have been communication to parents about academic progress. So when we look at that comparison before and after, um, middle school, um, the differences between that, you know, if it improved, that's what we're looking at here. So, um, blue, I tried to keep consistent colors here, was with middle school, and purple was the high school numbers there. So high school sort of outscored middle school as far as, um, what teachers were providing in feedback than the middle school. Parent perception, I want to be clear on that from the parent survey. This was different at all levels. We made changes at each of the levels. Um, high school, we went to things called the Blue and Gold Week. We did weekly lesson plans. Um, elementaries had Friday was a catch-up day and one-on-one work with the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, trying to focus on the learning piece of it. Um, so they had different things, so we couldn't compare those. We wanted to see what the feedback was on each of these elements. And so when you look at the statistics from there, um, again, one was it's, it was better during virtual learning. A zero on this question would have been, it's about the same. The changes you made were about the same to the things that you did when you're in person, and a negative number means that it was, you know, was not better. So, receiving weekly learning goals, if you look at elementary, they gave it a point four-five, which means it was better during virtual learning. Um, getting that information, parents felt at the elementary that it was better. If you look at middle school, a point one-two. So slightly better at the middle school, they were saying was a little bit better, but not as better as the elementary parents said they did, you know, um, when you look at their feedback. Um, and a point one at the high school level. So, most of the things were, were slightly better. The one at the high school, for example, that got a point five-nine, which is the highest score, is that there was some flexibility in doing daily work throughout the day and week. And we, we saw that clearly through the comments, that people appreciated that flexibility rather than, I do math from 10 to 10:42, I do my science from 10:45 to 11:14. So a lot of the comments talked about the control of their own time and being able to do when it made sense for them, and we saw that. And so that's why you see a much higher score there, um, when we look at all those. So those were the statistical comments. I'm not going to, you know, take a look at that, but we had tons of, uh, comments, uh, that the parents gave us, and we coded those. We also then looked at what our students said. So our students', um, surveys, our K through five were all open-ended questions. K-4, K-5, and first graders, the parents asked the questions and recorded. Second, third, fourth, and fifth, it was kids in their own writing with their own login, so spelling mistakes and everything are there. Um, uh, six through eight, and nine through 12 had some questions they could rate and also give comments. So those were all there. Um, and I think it was helpful to hear in students' own words from, from a teacher what that, what that meant. And so while we coded it, I think it was important for them to actually hear how a student perceives something. When we look at the document that we used to analyze all of these, this is what our teachers used to look at the questions. So we wanted them, this was for our staff to look at, how did collaboration happen? When you couldn't have department meetings or team meetings and you had to meet virtually, what worked well for you? And what didn't work well? What really didn't work? And if it worked really well, how can we continue that when we come back in person or just make that something that we do? So a lot of the teachers felt, especially at our elementary levels, that they could meet across the grade level with with both buildings a lot easier because they didn't have to worry about driving or whatever, and they could do that very quickly. They felt that they had probably the most collaboration that they've had in a long time because of that ability to do that on a minute's notice, and because their schedules were aligned in building, they, they know that they had a lot of common times and they could, they could reach out to anybody. Um, I think even staff meetings, people would say that they were a little bit more productive when you were virtual, because you could stay focused on what you needed to do and not have to try to get everybody in a seat and all of that stuff from there. There were some things that they missed out when they were trying to show people or, or those types of things, but the, the meeting piece of it and the collaboration, for the most part for teachers, they felt that it was much better during virtual. So they're trying to figure out, how do we capture some of that and keep that when we return or even over the summer? Um, the second question, then, we wanted to make sure that it wasn't just educators talking about how they think things went. We wanted to use their feedback as part of the process because how they felt about things is really important, but they also needed to look at how parents and students felt on that same issue. Sometimes all three stakeholder groups agreed. Sometimes that wasn't the case. Sometimes parents and students thought something went not as well as it could have, and teachers thought it really went well. And so it was important to be able to look at it. So some of the comments for teachers, I think, were a little hard because maybe they worked hard at doing something, but somehow it didn't get translated into that went well. It didn't tra, you know, get turned into how they wanted it to be. So, this document was really for them, as they did breakout groups last week, to talk about, what did the survey say? What did we learn from it? So at the very end of the time, all, teachers were in breakout groups of four or five teachers, and they worked on these questions, and administrators sort of popped in. They were all virtual, and had those conversations. At the very end of, for the last half hour, the entire buildings got together virtually and talked about, what did we collectively see? And what are some things that all groups really believed were that important that we want to move forward next year? And so they have some action plans that they're putting together by building, and some teachers volunteered to, to get on those. Um, I know I, I met with high school this afternoon, and theirs involves parents and students and teachers coming together with some common expectations. I think the hardest part, I, I, and I don't know, and Lynn maybe can talk a little bit more, but one of the things that was hard for teachers is there was a lot of comments about, from parents and students, that I didn't get a lot of feedback on my work. Teachers felt that they were giving a lot of feedback, so somewhere there's a disconnect in what people are talking about for feedback, or what teachers are thinking that they're doing a really great job on. Parents and students are not saying the same thing. So one of their action items is to form a committee, um, for students, parents, and teachers on it, to sort of talk about, what does that mean when we're giving the right level of feedback? What do you mean by feedback? What are you expecting to get back? And what's the right amount of tur, um, time to be able to, if an assignment is turned in here, what are you expecting? Comments on the assignment, comments at Infinite Campus, a verbal message. So it really brought to light, I think, for, for teachers that sometimes what we think all of the hours is, is not meeting the expectations of parents and students of what they're looking for. Maybe they're putting way more time in to something that is not the feedback that others are looking for. So it was a really, really good conversations. So that's what came out of, um, last week. I'll pause here, and then I'm going to let Lynn talk about the next piece of it that we're going to start Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
So you just said that there were things that, um, ideas that came up that were good that you want to move forward. Is that in a virtual learning, or is that a virtual learning model, or in-person, or both?
Both.
Doesn't matter.
Right, it doesn't matter. So right now, not having, um, common expectations about what is meant for feedback, that doesn't matter if it's virtual or in-person or whatever model we're using. Parents are expecting something different. We know sometimes parents expect, my child turned in that 20-page essay an hour ago, I don't see a grade in Infinite Campus, why is that? Right? So sometimes there's just unrealistic expectations, or what that is. So, so the things we tried to do were saying, regardless of what model that we're in, those are changes we could make that would better the system, because what we heard people say was this. What, what, if we don't have common expectations, then, then we're going to continue to have, it doesn't matter what model we're in.
No? I guess, so the teachers are working on this data now, kind of like stepping back a little bit. Do we get to see it eventually when it gets released?
To see the action plan, or?
No, the results of, like, everything on the survey.
That was, I think it was in the folder, is that what you're talking?
It's in the, oh, there's another folder, not inside the package.
Yeah, they're all, yeah, so, yep, there's folders within folders. So they're all, all of them are in there. And so teachers have seen it, the board has seen it. I'm going to let the parents see that, um, and then also put out there what the action plans, because some of the parents who put their name in the reopening survey about wanting to be in focus groups, we're going to use that as a starting place for parents to be contacted to serve on some of these, these groups also by building level to help. They're obviously interested in improving, which is great, and so we want to be able to use them for that piece of it, too.
Being an elementary parent, um, I can understand some of that, the variety of the feedback, saying, you know, there's not enough. Um, I saw a wide range of, a thumbs up to great job, to, I really like what you did here. You really used this and this to show what we're looking for. So I can understand that to a certain point of how there's a, a wide range of it, because each teacher seemed to have their own way of providing that, so that, that's good to hear.
Yeah, and I think, Jesse, that is really important. Sometimes people, if you do it a certain way and you're with your colleagues, you're thinking that everybody does the feedback the same way you do, but we never talk about that specifically. And so, having that common expectation will be really clear to us, because you're right, and sometimes, having that out there, like, it, it's not just like a thumbs up or a plus or a minus like you might have gotten. It's like, that's not what we're talking about, feedback. Like, actually, maybe that is or that isn't, but we have to decide that, yeah. Nothing. So, um, this week, Lynn is, we're going to continue to talk about some of the other pieces, and so I'm going to have Lynn share using a microphone. Oh, you can, if you want to, you want to, if you want to share things visually?
Yeah, we like visual.
We do. Sit right there and talk? Yeah, I have a weird. I just need that white part.
So we are going into session B this week, which is really now starting to look at the academic pieces. So last week, teachers saw a lot of, um, a lot of the survey feedback and looked at, um, you know, what, what students were saying, what parents were saying. Ruro. Oh, new computer. Hey, there we go. So this week is really going to, we're going to talk about sort of setting the academic table and discussing what needs to happen now, because we can't just start a school year, as we maybe normally would, knowing what just happened. So, we're going to meet tomorrow with, and Wednesday and Thursday as well, with groups of teachers, and talk about what needs to happen next. So, all teachers got, um, an agenda, and they were able to sign up like last week. They could take their choice of a Tuesday, a Wednesday, or a Thursday. We had morning times, afternoon times, or evening times to try and accommodate everyone's schedule. And what we're going to really focus on this week are four main topics. And the four main topics, when you look at them, they might look a little disjointed if you're not, um, thinking all the way through, but we really want to say- But we really want to say, based on what just happened, where do we actually start the year this year? And we can't just come in and just start teaching because the bottom fell out of the last part of last year. So, particularly for courses that rely on a sequential set of courses, next grade level or next course, you know, from geometry, kids go into Algebra II, or from third grade science going to fourth grade science. What does that mean now as students come back and fall, and what did they miss? Was it critical content that last quarter of the year? How do we know that they understood it or didn't? How do we gather that information? How do we communicate to the next level of teacher up? So, if I'm a fourth grade math teacher, what is the discussion with, first of all, what did my kids get through or not get through? And now, what's the discussion with the fifth grade math teacher on, look, we left all of this stuff on the table. So, now that next level of teacher is going to have to say, alright, so what does that mean? Did we leave stuff on the table that's really going to create some stumbling blocks for trying to access this year's curricular material? So, there are four main topics. The first topic is just, we call them, I named them like an awareness topic, a reflection topic, and some action topics. The awareness topic is that we've been on a trajectory to get our curriculum published for the last couple of years because, as you all know, we've never had a curriculum on our website where parents and community, whoever, could just go and click on the website and say, okay, I want to know exactly what happens in third grade social studies. And you can see a unit plan, you can see the topics that are studied, you can see the state standards that are covered. We have not had that for public display. We got ourselves to a point where if somebody asks for it, we can produce it. But now, we want people to just be able to go and not have to ask for it. They can just go and view it at will. So, we are still on schedule to have our, what we're calling our Curriculum Hub documents, published in September of this year. And want to remind teachers, you know, we're doing this. We talked about it last year before the floor dropped out, but we're still on schedule to do it. And what does that mean? And just a little bit of a review and refresher on our curriculum framework, where they're looking at documents, where they're going to go back and work tomorrow and in the days to come. Topic number two is, sort of, we were talking about with the feedback piece. We're going to have them do a reflection activity with their teammates and talk about the difference between articulating learning goals and intended learning outcomes as opposed to talking about activity goals and expectations. Because what we were finding, much like Jessie was talking about, we have a wide range of feedback. Some of it is like, that was great, which everyone feels good about, that was great. But what was great about it might remain a mystery. We bumped into a lot of feedback things, and we can go look at narrative feedback still in Infinite Campus where teachers would often talk more about the activity than talk about, what is the expected learning that we're using this activity to get at, so to speak? And a lot of, a lot of feedback would be around, you know, well, you really, you forgot to complete this section. Or if you want to improve it, write an extra paragraph. So, it was very like activity-based feedback as opposed to, what is the skill that we're trying to get you to come forward with? And how do we talk about that with kids and parents? We did keep bumping into feedback from parents saying, I'm getting a lot of feedback about, turn this in, don't turn this in. That was good, this is bad, that was neat, that was sloppy, but what, what's the purpose? I can't explain to my child, what is the purpose of this particular project? What are we trying to get at? So, really practicing, talking about the true learning that we're trying to elicit from students as opposed to just, do this activity, great, that was wonderful, now do this activity, great, now that was wonderful, do this activity. And if kids are, you know, a lot of kids are like, great, I'll do it, I'll do it, I'll do it. But for what? And what is the purpose and where are we going with this? It's sometimes hidden to them and sometimes assumed by us as teachers because we know what we're doing. We know what we want them to do, but illuminating that for them is more and more important. Topic three is the big one. That is the series of actions of really looking at our curriculum adjustments, what needs to happen now. So, they're going to go into documents that look like this. And they have some guiding documents where they are really going to dig in, and they're going to go in and they're going to first clarify the course and course content and learning that happened in 2019-20, or what didn't happen. And they're going to document that in our curriculum documents. So, they've got a step-by-step of, they're going to delete everything that was covered well. We're good with this, we're good with this, get rid of it, get rid of it. Left standing is the material that just got left hanging out there at the end of the year. That becomes the impetus for the discussion with the next level teacher, saying, here's all the stuff that did not get covered. So, what does this mean now for the next level? Because we don't want to set people up for failure right out of the gate. So, they're going to go through and have those discussions, and they communicate those adjustments to the teachers of the next level or course. Then they're going to go on to take that information. So, I'm a fifth grade science teacher. I just talked with the fourth grade science teachers. And so, now I'm going to look at my units page for this year. Where am I starting? Do I need to take some of that fourth grade material and do some review before I can really get going with the fifth grade stuff? Does it not matter? Do I take that stuff and put it maybe later in the year because pacing might not mean it has to come at the beginning of the year? Depends on the content area. They're all very, very different in how they are sequenced. So, that's then, the next step is just saying, the adjusted units, because they're not as we would normally expect them to be because of last year. We're going to document that, and that just becomes our unit plan and our curriculum plan for this year. We're also going to ask them to, this is all good work on teachers' parts, and it's all great dialogue and discourse. How do we like test what we think we know? Because there's really no way of knowing. It's just so all over the map right now. So, we're also asking them to determine course pre-assessments to figure out what would be a good pre-assessment to start the year because we could have that fourth grade science to fifth grade science discussion. We think we did this. We're pretty sure kids got this. But until we really test the system, we don't know for sure. So, what would be a good pre-assessment to say, okay, let's give this to the incoming fifth graders and just see what they retain, what they remember, and then that helps us set starting points as well. And then, once they do this, we're asking them to do the work now, sort of in trade for some of the hours that they would normally work at the end of August, and say, we actually need the work now, not later. So, we've got, almost all of our staff has been very, very agreeable to that, which is wonderful. The other big point that we're going to get into is then, you know, when the school year happens, as you're making all these plans, what happens if on August 26th, somebody flips a switch and says, y'all got to shut down and go virtual before we've even gotten out of the gate? What, what are we putting into place so that we can flip between those two systems as fluidly as possible? So, we are onboarding a program called Canvas, which is a learning management system. It operates in some ways much like Google Classroom does, but it does not force going to multiple locations for parents and students. One student's Canvas application, all their classes would just be on one page in a dashboard setting. Parents don't get a bazillion notifications for all these different Google Classrooms. It's just one page for your child, actually for a family. You can see all your kids on one page and not have to be flipping through all of this different mode of communication. So, that's going to be a heady topic, too, because we're going to give the overview for what a learning management system is, what it's intended to do, how we're going to use it. Right now, Canvas is uploading all of our stuff, so we can't really train anybody on it yet until we get all of their stuff. Has to get done first. But we're going to ask for teachers to become, to volunteer to become teacher leaders and say, you know, in each building, who would be willing to be a teacher leader in the Canvas training platform? And contact me, and we'll kind of get that set up and have trained the trainer models with that. So, those are really the big things for this week.
So, Lynn, we're kind of assuming that we're behind? Or we just want to identify what wasn't?
We're not behind her, behind her. We're not more behind than anyone else. I mean, if this is what all districts have to do right now.
I get that, but I'm just saying, we're trying to identify where we, what wasn't taught, I guess you want to say?
We're trying to identify because virtual learning, A, you didn't have access to all the same kids that you normally would. Some just didn't engage. Some engaged more than we thought. And that's, that's another thing, too, where teachers came back and said, you know, I had students that never said boo in the classroom that were hyper-engaged, and they were rock stars in this environment. That's one of the things we don't want them to lose because going back to normal means you're going to just assume that those children don't get engaged now because we're face-to-face. What, how do we walk in both of those worlds? So, I think it's just trying to maintain our firm understanding of what actually happened or didn't happen. And virtual learning is just not the same. The communication pieces are not the same, and it goes slower than face-to-face. You can't verbally fill in the gaps. You can't verbally kind of say, oh, let me re-explain that for you because you didn't get it. Everything takes longer in virtual learning. So, some of that end-of-the-year content just may not have happened.
So, then how do we, for the, for the kids that did get it and are here, and the kids that didn't, are in the same class? How do we not?
One of the things that we don't want to lose is the pre-assessment piece. And we, when we were in virtual, it was sort of a risky move, I think, but it paid dividends in saying to teachers, when we took that pause in the middle and said, you need to give a pre-assessment. If you're going to introduce something kind of new, you need to do a pre-assessment because, A, if students aren't ready for it, you can't go there yet. And B, if they already know it, why would you put them through it? So, teachers got their first taste of, oh, I get it. I got to develop a couple of different entry plans. And so, some kids might enter here, some kids might have to enter there, some kids might have to enter there. So, that's the pre-assessment piece where we're going to have to come up with. Not everybody gets the same thing automatically all the time, which is how it should be, really, all the time. But it takes practice, and it takes time to have those discussions, which we were always really short on, and we had more time during the virtual learning piece to really engage in those discussions. Teams got deeper with those discussions during that time, one of those silver lining things. So, when we say we don't want to lose some things, these are all those great discussions that teachers came forward going, oh, my gosh, I had 10 kids that I just thought they hated my class. They never did anything. They're like the rock stars right now. I had two kids who are my straight-A students, and they're really struggling. I don't know what's happening with them. So, how do we account for everybody? Because there's not a one-size-fits-all. It's tricky. Did I answer your question?
Oh, yeah.
What I would say to that is, I think historically, and we're not unique in our district, elementary teachers have done a better job of, when they introduce something new, knowing that not every student is at the same place and they're able to personalize that. Middle and high school teachers have typically, like, everybody is starting from here. And part of that is coming from, the farther I've been getting content, you're assuming that nobody's been exposed to it, right? I'm teaching, I'm not teaching anything but AP US history. I'm guessing these kids haven't been exposed to it. It's an assumption, however, and we shouldn't be starting with that assumption. So, it was, it's, for our middle and high school teachers, it's a little bit newer than our elementary teachers that.
Question, so then, I guess what I'm trying to understand is that will we expect increased differentiation in instruction as we come back, knowing that students had different experiences at home where some might not have been, you know, able to do as much, or some might have been able to do more? Because it sounded like, aside from the pre-assessment, we're going to be looking at, you know, where did the whole class leave off, or how far did we make it through the material? And then, I guess the question is also, just from my own understanding, when kids are doing pre-assessments at the middle and high school level, does that mean that they are then exempted from some content if they perform well in the pre-assessment? Because I think that might have been a little bit confusing during virtual learning.
I wouldn't say they're exempted from content. I would say that now they have, they have access to new levels of content. It's not that they just sit and twiddle their thumbs and wait for everyone to catch up. And there was some confusion about that because some people are saying, you already know it. You just sit still, and then, you know, we'll catch up to you, which is not the intention. The intention is, if they already know it, where are they going next? And that, that should be part of the plan, yes. There's another part, too, I was going to respond to, and I forgot. Yeah, and that is the expectation is because, and we've had a formula, we've said, successful completion. And we're going to have to be very careful about stuff that was covered because cover does not necessarily mean that anybody learned it. There's that old parable about, well, I taught the man to swim, but then he jumped in the pool and sank right to the bottom. So, you might have told him what to do, but that's not necessarily teaching someone, and that's not, definitely not them necessarily learning it. So, coverage is not the same as. So, we have said, when you say something is, and it's in these documents, when you say something you feel was successfully covered, think roughly 75% of your kids gave really strong evidence that they understood clearly those standards and targets. And then, still, that 25%, now what? And what about that 25%?
Okay. Are you expecting, I guess we'll find out. Are you expecting to see like a marked difference between students coming back from virtual learning? You know, there was a lot of talk about a catch-up period or something like that coming back to school. So, how are we handling that at Whitnall?
We had the Hold Harmless Agreement for our secondary students where we just said, we will not allow you to outright fail. And many of those students, I didn't look at the last numbers from Ryan, but many of those students took care of that. We gave them a three-week virtual summer school window to say, you can resolve being completes in this three weeks, right? When school ended on a Friday, and on a Monday, we started with that summer program. And they were just, these students were like linked up with teachers that would just support them and say, alright, what's next? What do you need? What do you? And they got some really pretty good, you know, one-on-one or hands-on kind of stuff. Many, I would say a majority, vast majority of those students took care of their stuff within the first two of those three weeks. So, we didn't have a lot of things hanging out. We have said that we won't make those incompletes go into anything failure-related until the end of the first quarter. So, we at least have the shot with those students to be face-to-face because clearly, virtual did not work. We're not going to keep saying, okay, virtually, keep giving, give us stuff that you didn't give us in the first place. So, we have said, the first week in November, we'll give students, and the People Services people, have those students targeted to just make sure that, is everything okay? You know, can we, where do we need to start? So, we are keeping an eye on those students, too, and giving them what we hope is sufficient time in the face-to-face environment so we can hang out in the face-to-face environment through November.
Alright, thanks.
Yeah.
And what about those rock stars that really performed on virtual as opposed to in-person?
Right.
Are we going to provide them some specialized learning?
And that's, that's part of tomorrow's discussion, well, tomorrow, Wednesday, Thursday, is that when we come back, because teachers are, they're craving the normalcy, as we all are. We're craving to just go back to what, where we feel comfortable again. So, even they're catching themselves, right, saying, I can't wait to get back to normal. But then, we got to remember, normal disenfranchised some populations of our students. So, is that the normal, normal we really want to get back to? So, we're trying to say, the blended learning piece where some kids are great virtual, some kids are great not. Could we do some virtual things onsite, face-to-face? You know, it doesn't have to be, they're either away or they're here. Blended learning has been a thing for a long time where some students are really on the technology and doing things on a blended format. A teacher can work with five kids over here and have students working through some things here. So, we want to capture that virtual needs to be, doesn't need to be when we're just all away. Virtual learning can be part of the face-to-face setting as well. So, we do want to capture all.
Thank you.
I've got one more question, and that's within the Canvas learning management system. About how much time do we expect that it will take for teachers to ramp up in that?
Yeah. So, there's, it's got many, many features. So, right now, we're making a backward plan of, to start the year, what are the basics that all teachers need to know? And Todd, Stacy, and I are kind of looking at, okay, here are the basics that they need to know by the end of August in order, if we flip the switch, this is what they need to make it functionally. Luckily, it operates a lot like Google Classroom. The setup feels a lot like Google Classroom. There are many more features that if we didn't get to those by the beginning of the school year, we could let those go. So, we've kind of got a minimal plan, and then, once the school year ticks off, we're going to start to visit staff meetings and eventually get that going into a much more robust system.
Okay. And then, how much of a learning curve is there for parents and students?
On Canvas?
Yeah.
The initial onboarding is, I would say, it doesn't look like it's initially very intuitive, but once you understand what the things are on the screen, again, it operates a lot like Google Classroom. So, once people get into it, I think they're going to find that it looks pretty familiar and feels pretty familiar. Once it actually runs, I think it's going to be pretty beautiful because parents will not have to get all these different notifications and look at all these different Google Classrooms. You just look at your student, and all of their information is on one page. You have three students, all of their information is on one page. So, and it's very dashboard-y with very visual, like, graphic, colorful, like, you know, click on this class, click on that class, click on that class. It logs student time in, so students are working in there. So, a teacher can see, hey, this student logged in at 7:00 last night and logged out at 7:02. You know, so what happened? Or this kid was on there for three hours. Oh, my gosh. And then, it actually logs whether they're active or not. So, it's not that they just log in and walk away and go watch Netflix. They're in there like doing things. The program keeps track of that.
UWM Anderson uses it. I know my daughter, I'm sure, some other kids here, parents, I mean, walked right into it and speak highly of it. I think for those reasons.
I did one, I know there's a question about summer school. I just wanted to share what our initial data is right here that Ryan shared with us. So, in the middle school, we had 137 courses that students had to enroll in that had not completed learning targets. 28 of the courses were dropped because of no attendance. The students just didn't go enroll them, and they just didn't engage at all. 28% of the students engaged some but did not get through all of the learning. So, those are the students we have to come back and say, in the fall, we already know that they didn't get through those learning targets. What do we do? What do we do? Fifty-two percent of the courses were completed and they demonstrated the learning. So, pretty consistent with the high school, twenty-two percent attendance, just never engaged. Twenty-nine percent of the kids engaged, but did not get through all of the learning that they didn't demonstrate. And forty-nine percent of them completed the learning and fulfilled those courses by demonstrating that. So about fifty percent of the courses that were offered for students who did not engage, did the extended amount of time, able to demonstrate proficiency. And half of that didn't engage, and the other half attempted some. So those are the groups of students that principals and counselors will have to look at. As far as, we already know those students, that they were identified at the end of the year, didn't fulfill proficiency. So we already have a starting list of what that looks like, in addition to some of the pre-assessment data and some of the other stuff that we'll add to that.
Anybody else?
You had mentioned the, about November and those that need to catch up, is that across all levels?
Sorry, I'm, what?
You had mentioned about November and those who may need to catch up, is that across all levels? Or is that just high school, middle school?
Middle school, high school, because elementary, we, we did their hold harmless a bit differently, where we just said, you know, we're taking where they sat at second semester, and we're gonna sort of freeze those grades, run narrative comments. And then if teachers felt that actually they were moving the needle on those grades, they went in and made adjustments to that grade. You know, if they, like, a kid was down here and then was really showing some good progress that would have, like, raised a mark, they went in and changed it there. So they are not in the exact same situation, in that we just said, these are your grades, unless we see some rapid improvements or some significant improvements, and then we'll go and change that.
Okay.
So they don't have that same issue right now, yeah.
Anybody else? Okay.
And then, virtual learning survey as well?
Okay.
Okay.
Mike doesn't want to come back.
Yeah, I'm sure he doesn't, like, he's used that space, maybe it's okay about this. So, I'm gonna share with you the reopen survey. You don't have hard copies of it for a couple of reasons. Some of the analysis, but also it's, I wanted to be careful about what was, you know, had and how that was being shared right now. So we'll get a PDF of this, but there's a couple of pieces, a couple of the comments. One of the questions had four hundred and fifty-five comments. And I closed it at eight AM this morning. And so while Logan and I were frantically coding, one question get entirely coded, and it's about two-thirds. And so I wanted to finish that up, so, so you did. And I wanted to make sure you didn't have which copy, which, whatever that we're looking at. So I'm gonna share it, finish it up, and make sure, in case the board wants to say, hey, that'd be helpful if you showed that, or what can we do before we send it out to all of the parents? So you're getting, that Lynn and Mike haven't even seen this. So you are seeing right, right off from the surveys, right off the press, I guess, if that's a thing. So, in your, if you have your Google Drive open under the reopen folder, I put a copy of the questions, I did email them out to you, as all parent, staff also saw them in a PDF that were asked. So I just put those questions in that folder. You can call them up from your email if you want to see how it was worded or how it exactly looked. I'll restate the question on here, so you don't necessarily need to. But if you wanted to have that up, so you can follow along the questions that were there. So first thing I wanna, you know, recognize several of our parents, who, some of them, their occupations deal with data and analytics, and surveys that, that gave some feedback on how questions were answered, and just a lot of that, that piece of it before we sent it out. I think it made a more solid survey. I think parents appreciated the, how concise it was, and yet it balanced. I know that a couple of the principals had also gotten some, that was a good survey, that it was about the right amount of time, that it had some open-ended, but still kept it tight enough. So, so in analyzing this, this was much easier to do, for example, than our virtual learning. That was a little bit more challenging, but so was the topic, I guess, and trying to figure out what it was we exactly wanted. So we had eleven hundred and six household responses from the survey. We opened it up on July first, and as I said, I was gonna close it at mid-light last night, but we actually got two more surveys in before eight AM this morning. And so closed it then and started analyzing what the data looked like there. So it was open for a significant amount of time, as far as, of what it looks like for people to finish it. Sent out a couple text, a text reminder, in addition to the email that was sent out, that we looked at it. So, as we look at the, the breakdown, interestingly enough, so this survey, you would fill out any, any students, they weren't separate surveys. So if I was a household that had a child at all levels, I would mark all levels. So we had the highest percent, people had the highest percentage of high school, which is interesting, since it has the second fewer grades, right? Middle school's got only three grades in it, and, and if you think about elementary, it's got K-four all the way through fifth grade. So the number of years, I thought that that would just be higher overall. So if I had an elementary and a middle and a high school, I would click all three of those boxes. So those don't add up to a hundred percent, because they shouldn't, if you're, if you're thinking about how the survey was asked. So that's just a distribution of how the, how, who answered it from each of the questions. So, before we jump into the, the quest, the exact, exact questions, we put, we posed out there three models, but we have to have a starting place. Because otherwise, there's no, where do we start from, and parents would really struggle. And so the starting place that we put out there, which is where the majority of school districts are doing right now, I say majority, because there might be some different ones. I can tell you, those in our direct immediate are looking at that, is assuming five-day in-person. That's the assumption. And then, and going from there, and seeing where the tolerance is, right? And so the model that we put out there, which is in-person, and in-person could mean a variety of things. Some districts, if you looked at the DPI plan, in-person meant four days in-person, and day five was a deep cleaning day, and kids were just off, and teachers were learning. So ours is a five-day model in-person. And, and that's the premise of everybody around us who's doing that with survey results also. So we asked, we set up that scenario, that's what it means for in-person. We also set up what a hybrid model means, because there's a million different models and iterations. But we went through, what could we at Whitnall with twenty-five to twenty-six hundred students in our configuration manage? That's the other thing that you have to keep in mind. We're not Milwaukee, but we're also not a different size. So we have to look at our size and say, what's manageable from our staff? Could they do simultaneous in-person and virtual? We don't have enough staff to separate out. We aren't like some districts and already have a virtual charter school, that we already have a system built. So we had to look at what's doable. So the hybrid model we put was Monday, Tuesday, and then all kids would be virtual on Wednesday, and then Thursday, Friday. And so you would be on, I mean, everybody would be virtual on Wednesday. So you would be in-person two days and virtual three days. It was just a matter of what those days were. Logistics of that, obviously, what is, is it by family, is it by grade level? A lot of different things, and those are the questions that we have in order to provide that. And then, we still had questions around staffing. So who's teaching the kids virtual when they're virtual, and who's teaching them in-person when they're in-person? Type of thing, how, how do we do that? And so, but we figured, if, if any hybrid model, that was the one that we would do here, that, that we would look at. And the last one, obviously, is entirely virtual, which we've sort of had a look at that, with changes that I think Lynn talked about a little bit, switching learning management, and obviously, changes in place. So keeping that in mind, when parents answered virtual, some of them had the experience that we just went in, not knowing that there was going to be changes or what it looked like. And also, some of them knowing that that may not even be, that may be, that choice may be made for us, as it was before. So, wanted to set up what those questions looks like, so. So the in-person instructional model that we shared, when you look at, so green meaning everybody, the options were, this is an acceptable model to me. Yellow would mean, it's not ideal, but my family can make it work. And red is, this is not acceptable. And if you said it wasn't acceptable, we wanted you to share some comments, so we could take a look at what are the reasons that you said it wasn't acceptable. So as far as people doing a five-day face-to-face in-person model, we had seventy point five-nine percent of people say that that was an acceptable model for them. Another nineteen percent of people said, while not ideal, my family could make that work. And then ten point four percent of people saying that it's not an acceptable situation. If you look at it by school, there wasn't very much deviation by school or level. Like, it is pretty consistent. I was very curious about all of the models, to see if at elementary or high school, you would see some variations. And consistently, there wasn't that variation. Some of the comments talked about differences, but it didn't show up in how they answered. So, that, the breakdown shows you that there isn't anything that statistically is showing that there's a variation on any level. I think some of the comments will allude to the, the social-emotional piece of being in-person. And I think some of the, the pieces at the high school, middle school level talk about co-curriculars, or they're able to handle precautionary measures and understand them well enough to be able to be in-person.
What were some of the comments about not acceptable?
Yep, so. The next question, it, it said, if you, if you answered unacceptable, it automatically took you to another question that says, if you said it was unacceptable, why? And so a hundred and eight of the people provided us some answers. You didn't have to, we didn't force people, we were hoping they would give us some answers. So if you look at what some of the people were looking at, so fifty-eight of those people said they just have a general fear of the virus. They made comments like, until there's a vaccine, I'm not leaving my house. Or I really think that it's, we're not taking it as serious as we could. So some true fear in their statement about the virus. So that, that's a significant number of the people who left a comment, if you look at that. A high-risk household, sixteen people indicated in the comments that one of the reasons is they have someone, either their child or an adult in the household, that has a high-risk situation. Seven people said that they just prefer a hybrid learning model, that was the only reason they gave. I think that that's, that's what I would like to do. Eight people said they prefer virtual learning, they just like that mode of instruction. It must have worked well for their child, and they would like to continue it. Twenty people talked about how it was just impossible to manage all of the stuff that you would have to do with precautionary measures and keeping, making a five-day in-person, all of that, without having time for either deep cleaning or whatever reason they gave. But we put it under the unmanageable. And then ten people said, I just need more details. So right now, it's not acceptable, because I don't have all the details for me to really make a decision. Twenty, what did I say, ten? Okay. So I'm gonna pause after each of the questions, because this is the first time that people have really seen the data and that we're looking at it. So I can go, I'm gonna just keep it at this. If, if people want to talk about this, or go back to the previous slide, or talk about the way that the numbers fell out, or what that means.
Go around, Karen.
It's notice, it's notable that, you know, nine out of ten families seem like they would be okay with this option.
Nancy?
Nothing yet.
Jessie?
I think it's good with those results, because then it helps with the busing situation as well. Because that kind of fits into that, like, okay, if you're okay with coming back five days a week, are you likely to come back, you know, and use the busing system? Or does that throw a wrench into your plans? But at least gives hope for, for that situation, because I know that that's up in the air as well.
Steven?
So with the people who have fear of virus, does that put them into like, like, if we open the schools and some people absolutely don't want to come, what options does that leave their child for learning?
So I'm gonna get to that when we get to what our plan looks like, but that's, I mean, it's a great question and a valid question. I think maybe some that they had, they didn't have enough details, which again, it was a balance of finding the right number of questions to get, a starting point to move forward with, versus like, hey, here's all the details, and then we couldn't use their feedback to develop a plan, so, yep.
You got another one right now?
Okay, so the hybrid model, when we look at that, again, sticking with the same colors on how people answered, green meaning it's acceptable, yellow, yellow meaning it's not ideal, but we could probably make it work, and red meaning just not acceptable. So thirty-two percent of people here said that a hybrid model would be acceptable. Another forty-four percent said it's not ideal, but I can make it work. And then twenty-three percent of the people said, this is just not acceptable. A little variation, when you look at this from high school, more high school and then middle school, but definitely high school said that they could make that work. You know, we could deduce why they could, the kids can drive, they can stay home by themselves, all of those types of things. We would probably expect some variation here. When you look at the elementaries, pretty close to, you know, they had fewer, as we looked at that. So some variation by the level, which, which you would expect here, because of having to balance that. So when we asked about what makes the, a hybrid model unacceptable, four people said, we just don't like this structure, we wish it, we like hybrid, we just wish you'd give us a different model in hybrid. Again, general fear of the virus, twelve people said, if there's any face-to-face, I'm still gonna say no. Six people said that, again, somebody has high risk in the household, so the same reason they said no to face-to-face would say no here. They don't want any virtual piece, so forty-three people said they don't like virtual. And so this model has virtual in it, so, no. People specifics, another seventy-three people wrote in their answer, I'm saying no, and it's unacceptable, because I want five days a week. Twelve people prefer virtual, so they don't want any face-to-face, again. We're guessing that the same people answered, some similarities there, they continued with that, we found that. A hundred and twenty-five people out of two hundred and forty-six said the scheduling concerns of doing a hybrid model, of making it work with their family life, which we probably all could anticipate, but we have data that supports that. Nineteen people say no, because they want to maximize the socialization of their child, and so this doesn't allow for enough of that to happen, especially for younger learners. Nine people said, I just don't have enough details about this hybrid model to, so it's unacceptable to me at this point. And five were just very random comments that we couldn't code. They either had nothing to do with this question at all. There were some of those types of questions, or it, it, we weren't quite sure what it even meant when they, they had written it. So that's sort of what the comments look like when we look at a hybrid model.
No comments.
Nancy?
So is the hybrid model, half the students go Monday, Tuesday, in-person? Everybody's virtual on Wednesday, and then the other half goes in-person on Thursday or Friday?
I don't have my question up there, do you have the, is that what it says in there?
No, it's not what it said.
Yeah, it did. Didn't it, let me have the survey, I can call it up, I don't want to just get out of this. Sorry, what is it?
Yeah, can you go down to the hybrid question? What does it say?
Includes both in-person and...
Yeah, it's Monday, Tuesday.
For half the students?
Yep. Or, or whatever, or it could be all, like, elementary, and elementary's up here. We just, Monday, Tuesday for some students, everybody's virtual Wednesday, and then the other students are here Thursday, Friday.
So three days, people would be virtual?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Yep.
I can see where that would be a scheduling nightmare for parents.
Jessie?
Yep.
That's a pretty... Steven?
This, it, it expected results, so.
Kevin?
No.
Okay. Wait. Where's my virtual? That's right, that's what I was just saying, do I have them out of order here? Maybe.
Well, it's so hot off the presses, we can't find it.
That's right, right, isn't that true? I don't know. Do we not have virtual in here? Wait, no, I have, I have no mouse either. I've lost my mouse. I'll get you a virtual. There we go, there's a mouse. Yeah, so I did all my charts, so we're gonna go right into here and take a look. So here's entirely virtual. So acceptable, twenty percent of the people... So here's entirely virtual, so acceptable, twenty percent of the people said entirely virtual is acceptable. Not ideal, my family could make it work, thirty-four percent. And not acceptable, forty-five percent do not want entirely virtual. So this is the one we are still coding. We had four hundred and seventy-three comments to this question. As you would expect from the number of people that say it's not acceptable, forty-five percent of the people did. So forty-five percent of the people were given that question to answer, hence the number of comments that we have there. But what I will tell you, and I can show you the tags that are up here that we've put in there, the primary reasons that people have said. Keep my glasses for this. Academic concerns, they prefer a five-day in-person, prefer hybrid. Scheduling concerns with the virtual, again, if those are parents, they need to monitor that. The lack of socialization, they mentioned spring 2020 as, did not like it, did not feel it met its needs. And so because of the experience with spring 2020 are saying no thank you to this option if it's going to replicate what that looks like. They, five people talked about some technology concerns, either on their end or not having devices or, or whatever that might be. And some people want more detail. So we are still analyzing the comments, but those are the, the tags that we are putting in what people say about virtual learning. Hence why I didn't have this in there, I don't know why it's in the PowerPoint.
Quick question, what was the one with the most comments on the bottom, I can't read it?
Untagged.
Untagged, because we still have to go three hundred and seventy comments.
Okay.
It takes a long time to go untagged.
I just wasn't sure if there was a big, you know?
Oh no, yeah, just untagged, yep, yep. Yeah.
Anybody else, I hope it won't go individually, anybody?
Okay, now, the million-dollar question, masks or no masks? Right? So, absolutely, sixty-five percent of the people say absolutely. Twenty-five percent of the people say, "I'm not sure." And nine percent of the people say, "No." So if you look at the absolutely and I'm still unsure, I mean, you have ninety-one, ninety, ninety-point-something percent of the people saying absolutely. And the comments, as I was just quoting those as we were coming in here, I will tell you around, my kid is five, good luck, it's a toy for them. And it's really around eight hours a day is not healthy, they won't keep it on, carbon dioxide. So, so I can, those are the reasons that a lot of, a lot of people, they also feel it's unmanageable, that it's just unrealistic for both teachers or staff to, your, your day will be just like, if you can't control cell phones, how will you control masks on kids and what will you do if they don't do it? And so the, the unmanageable, they think it'll be a distraction to learning. There was a, a number of people who don't believe that masks help and that really, and so there's a significant number of people that just believe that masks aren't helping and it doesn't matter. So why would we even put that through, it's, it's very unhealthy. Small number of people are talking about it's their freedom, you can't mandate what I do, compliance type of thing. Pretty small number on that, so that one is also finished being tagged. So those are the two comments in there, but those are the, the tags that go around there that the majority of people are, are putting those reasons that, that say no or unsure. Some of them differentiated in the comments, for example, "My seventh grader, no problem." "My first grader, that, that's gonna be a problem." Some also, but I will tell you that a lot of the comments for people who said either no or unsure said, "If it's required, I will make sure my child wears it." Right now, you're asking my opinion, but if it is a requirement, I expect my kid to follow the requirement.
Sorry.
So. Oh, and I did do some of that, so here's where, we're still halfway, more than that. A hundred and thirty-five of these have to be tagged, but those are, that's where we're seeing where, you know, so nine people right now have said it's their freedom of choice. You know, wearing a mask all eight hours, we're still sixty-four people at this point have said that, so. Still have to finish some of those totals, but that's where we're seeing why it's unacceptable, just to give us an idea of why people are saying that. Which, this is an interesting question because depending upon the community that you're in, this question will be dramatically different because I've seen results from school districts that are maybe thirty-five miles from here and look dram, the, the numbers are just reversed. Nine percent would be those that say it's acceptable and I'll do that. And so this is an important question, knowing, for us to know where our parents are feeling on it and more importantly, the comments that they're talking about, so we can embed some of those practices in the plan that we talk about. So this was some important findings that, that we took a look at, if you will.
Anybody?
I'll ask one, which is just, once we're through this, one of the things I'm curious about is if we've gotten any feedback from our staff and educators about their, you know, when there was a question about their needs and things like that, what the staff sentiment is on masks as well.
Yep, that'll be part of the reopening, because we did, Mike did a survey with staff, so, yep.
Great.
Anybody else?
Is there anything to indicate if people gave those answers based on the fact that, okay, if I say that my kid's not gonna wear a mask, school's not gonna open up?
I don't think so, no, I, because I, in fact, that's why I shared that I think the majority of people said, "I put no, but if it's a requirement, my, my kid's gonna go and, and good luck at keeping it on, but I will tell them that they need to," type of thing. So I think it was, here's where my sentiments are, you're asking me for my opinion on that, but, but, but if you make it a requirement, my kid will wear it, yeah.
Anybody else? Okay.
So the next question has to do with buses. So, we gave a scenario because we had to have a starting place so people knew what that would look like. So, no more than two students to a seat when possible, because we're also knowing we've got this math situation we have to do here. They've already told us that we can't have more than our ten buses, so we've got a, depending upon what ridership is. So if students are riding with siblings, we're gonna ask siblings to sit together, we're gonna load the bus back to front, so, you know, those types of things, students will be asked to wear a mask. So that's the scenario from which people asked. And so, when you look at how people are answering here, I'll help with the colors a little bit here. So, people who, the first one, the yellow one, they rode the bus previously and will continue to ride the bus. So twenty-seven percent of people said, "I rode it before, plan on riding it again." Four point three-two people said, "I rode the bus previously, but will not ride the bus." And some of the reasons that they gave is, "I now have a high schooler who can drive." So they were not all related to safety, so pretty small number of people who re, who did, you know, who adamantly said, "I absolutely not, I'm not doing it," but they weren't all related to safety reasons. Did not ride the bus before, but I now will ride the bus, is two point one-four percent. So we have two percent of the people who are now going to ride it, who never did before.
Lot of room here now.
Yeah, sign seats, that's not bad.
Fifty-three percent of the people, the, the largest bar that you see there, did not ride the bus before and still will not ride the bus. So they may have not been eligible or just, the parents always drop them off and parents will still drop them off. So that's the largest, I mean, more than half of the respondents of the survey said that. And twelve percent say they're completely undecided at that time. Again, the comments from, from that weren't all related to safety, it just has to do with what model we go to. If it's a hybrid, then that, or, or whatever, so they weren't all safety. Some were related to, again, "I don't believe it's manageable to do this" or, "My kid doesn't want to sit with their sibling on the bus," or whatever it might be. So, that talks about bus ridership a little bit.
So essentially, this is predicting no change in bus ridership.
Yep, and here's the, by school, when you look at the buses here, we're not seeing, you know, a significant number of, you know, changes too much from elementary. The, the biggest change is at middle school. And I don't know if that's just the ages from which they do that, so.
Do we put more than two kids on a seat?
In some routes, yes.
Oh, really?
In some, yeah, our, our most, there are some routes that go sixty, sixty-five kids. Now, granted, the capacity is seventy-eight, and capacity is based on three students to a seat. So I got here, high school, middle school, no problem there.
So what does it mean if there's two or three in a seat? There's no social distancing with two?
It really does, it's, it's a comfort.
It's a comfort thing with siblings?
We cannot, we cannot say that there's absolutely two to a seat on every route, based on this data. We don't have the buses, nor can we get the buses. So we are, we have, the buses we have are the buses we have.
Well, then why would we put that question that way?
Well, because it's still gonna be a goal, based on, based on assuming that there would be last ridership that was gonna be occurring, assuming that there's gonna be some rebalancing of the routes that are supposed to be occurring this summer, it's possible that we can have that, that is our goal.
Well, yeah, because it's a violation, it will be in place.
I think part of it, Quinn, is when you have two people in a seat, the likelihood of them touching each other is, I mean, at least you're a little bit further, three people, like, you can, you have, you would be like touching each other and so maybe a little bit of space for that.
I get that, but...
The way it's stated, it said, it does say no more than, so it could...
When possible. It says when possible.
When possible, when possible, yeah.
The following buses, regulations will be in place on buses.
Right, two to a seat, when possible. But we didn't say that it, that's an absolute, because part of it's on ridership, right? If half of the people said they were no longer riding it, then that's a doable thing. So there's sort of this, which comes first here in our planning, so. Because there are some times that friends will group together and there might be a seat that's open too, so like, it's sort of, it's, it's a back and forth, but without a doubt. Next question talked about priorities. And so when you look at, we gave, obviously all those things are important, but limited time or resources, where would, where would parents really like us to be putting our time as far as priorities to them? So I did, I did reorder these answers by score. So ensuring academic progress was rated the highest, so you had to rank a number one, two, and three. You couldn't pick beyond that, so it had a score of a two point five-one. So it was sixty-six percent of the people rated that as their number one, that that should be the district's priority right now, making sure that there is going to be academic progress regardless of which model we choose. The second one is supporting the physical health and wellness of people, that was a two point oh-six. So when you look at where people put that, either rating it number one, two, or three, and the weighted average of that, that's where that fell. So that was the second one, when you look at the scores of how people put that in there. Providing social connection ended up being the third one, as far as a priority. So whatever that social connection means, which would mean that even in a virtual setting, it didn't say physical, social connection, it just said that, and I think we saw that in our virtual learning, is that parents and students were asking for more Google meets with their classmates, with, with students, with as much of that as possible, asynchronous types of things. And so that's important to keep in mind that whatever model we're choosing, the social connection, and I think parents saw that, that they weren't getting as much socialization as before. And then obviously, the other three, it's not like they were low by, by any means. Offering sports and other co-curricular came next, supporting mental health, and the last one was improving the remote virtual learning. So it provides a little bit of guidance where parents are thinking our priorities are and where we should be placing some emphasis right now with our time, given we have as much time as we can, what is it that we should be doing? And so I think, you know, as Lynn shared, we definitely are putting some emphasis on the academic, where our kids, we're, we're not just assuming that we're starting as normal, we need to acknowledge what happened this spring and make sure that we're identifying where gaps might be and not assuming that all kids are in the same place and how do we, how do we meet that, you know, across the board regardless of what the situation was. Did people have questions on this? Last question then is, there were six hundred and fifty-five people that gave comments about what they would like to see in the reopening plan. Not surprised by any of it, it's the stuff that we've been planning to put into it, but it was good to know what they expected. And again, they, they have nothing to base this on, so it'd be like, what precautionary measures are you putting into? How masks will be used, how will lunch be done, what about recess, what about, you know? So those questions that are in there, which, which is good. So we will have all those comments and we will check those once we look at the categories, which I'll share with you in the draft of, of, of what that, the organization of the, the, the plan looks like, making sure that things that put in there are in there. And I think for the most part, they've, they were already things that we had put in there. But it's good to just double-check what parents' expectations are of a plan. So they're like, "Wait, we were expecting this and now you put this in there, that's not at all what we thought the plan would be," so. And then we did have three hundred and fifty-one parents say that they would be interested in some type of focus group. Now, that's a little large for a focus group, if you know anything about focus groups, but it does let us know that it gives a wide range of people who if we needed to, and we want to diversify the parents we're getting feedback at from all different grade levels, different circumstances, to be able to reach out. So I'll be sharing that with the building principals as they get feedback for building plans or different scenarios and, and being able to, to, you know, use those parents in a variety of the action plans we talked about or changes that we're making. So that's great that we had that many parents who are saying, "I'm interested in, 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 you know, looking at drafts of things and giving you some feedback on some of those." So that was very helpful to have that question in there. So the, the comments piece, we have to code more of those with there, but we are seeing some, you know, saturation with there. It will just be on some of those two questions that need to finish up the coding around the masks and then the virtual learning, because there were a lot of comments on both of those. But we are seeing, you know, some repeat of what we see from there, so. Any questions on the survey overall and, you know, we'll continually do that, use that as the basis of, you know, this percentage of parents said this at this point. This wasn't by any means a commitment to anything, but we needed to let them know where we're thinking and that this percentage of parents is supporting this, whether it's masks or a model of learning or anything, and so we can use the data. Because as we know, sometimes, you know, if we get contacted or where we get information from, you know, how representative is a small group of people, you know, so we may get ten emails, which is a lot, who tend to have comments about one topic and we sometimes all of a sudden think that that's where everybody is. I think having this large of a survey and people who responded will let us really say that that's where the data stands from. So even if a couple people are vocal in some ways, it may agree with what the survey is or maybe isn't and we just have to keep that in mind. Okay. Mike, I'm gonna ask you to share before I move on to the, the staff, you were unaware of this. So a little bit, we did give a staff survey, it was open-ended as far as what it, what are some things that we can help as you transition to coming back full face-to-face? And there were probably some themes that you also saw there, so if you just want to share what some of the themes or questions were.
Yeah, at that time, we hadn't put anything, or the only thing that we had told them the same way here was that we plan on going face-to-face five days per week. And so, what does that mean for you for the fall, I forgot exactly how it was phrased, but it was an open-ended question. A lot, a lot of it, of course, was around the, the face cloth, the, the face coverings and whether that would be mandatory or not for both students and staff, a lot of questions about that. A lot of suggestions on how to implement some safe things. A lot of, quite frankly, HR questions that are gonna have to be fleshed out over the next month as we solidify our plans and then respond to those HR questions. A lot are gonna be dependent upon different situations. And then I would say, you know, the third one just being, should, should we be in a virtual setting? You know, how, how will we know when to shut down the school? If we get one case, does that mean the school is closed? So just a lot of hypothetical situations that are trying to look at what sort of environment they, they could be in throughout the entire year. So some little offshoots from there, but those were really the top three, I would say.
So last week, I had some open forum for... For any educator who wanted to do some questions and answers and had teachers who asked. And, and so part of it has been, so they could just, and maybe we didn't have a direct answer for everything on that. Like, will everybody be, you know, we're, we're working on it. And I shared with them the survey. So, they could ask questions and I was able to share with them where we're getting the input. And I think if you pay attention to, and I'm gonna be very careful how I say this, the news. It's really easy to, you know, oh, there's a lot of this happening. And next day, now there's a lot of this happening. And so-and-so said we should be doing this, and so-and-so, or this group said we should be doing that. And depending upon if you're continually looking at one source, you're getting inundated with one, you know... But, but it's a wide spectrum of where it is. And so, I think sometimes for, you know, teachers who haven't been in some of the groups and the conversations about trying to do that. Get very focused on, on some of those pieces. So I think it was helpful. They were appreciative of listening to where, you know, that we're not making any of these decisions in isolation. That the amount of time we're spending with local health departments and medical people. And all of those, those, you know, our area school districts. I do think one of the other questions that we heard verbally, I don't know if it came out in the survey, was, how closely aligned are we to the plans of other area districts? Because sometimes they have kids that go to school in those other districts. And if they're gonna do something dramatically different, that impacts our situation. And that's one of the reasons that a lot of our districts collectively have said that, you know, we're, we're, we need to sort of all do this i- in the same manner. Or it's gonna create a lot of situations where, if their kids are in a district where they're all virtual and we're not. Now, they're gonna not be able to, you know, we're gonna do that. So we recognize that. So I think that was a little bit, okay, you are talking with other districts. I'm like, daily, believe me, daily. And so that was helpful for them to hear just some of the thinking and planning. Because we don't have this plan. And, and so part of it was just sharing the thinking and, and what goes into all of the decisions that we're making. So I think that that was good, that they could hear and have that. And I'd like to continue that on a weekly basis for any staff member who wants to just pop on and ask the questions about this, or what about this? You know, we did talk about, I think, the question that came up a lot from the staff is, you know, as employees, we can mandate mask-wearing. Where, where it makes sense. There might, you know, when they're eating, obviously, or things like that. We can't mandate, as a school district, masks for all children, for a variety of reasons. Municipalities or ordinances like that can do that. But, as far as constitutional rights and some of the situations with that. And I don't think teachers were aware of some of those things that go into place. And, and the disconnect between employees and being a public school. And an entity of what a public school means as compared to a restaurant can make you wear something as a private entity. Or to, to go to a certain store, they can make you do that because that's a private business. And so, that was an important fact for them to understand. The good news is, and I didn't have the data and wasn't going to share them with them. That it appears that the majority of our parents support that to the, to the extent that it's practicable and manageable. And so, but that's also a thing, and I think they also recognize, is that be careful what you wish for. Because now you have to manage what that looks like and there's, there's, you know, appropriate use. If, if the kid is constantly playing and touching with, you know, touching it, that's probably worse than if there was, their hands weren't on their face at all. So there's a lot of things that we have to talk about. Hand sanitizer and all of those types of things, because those haven't been things that we've typically had. So I think part of it just calmed a little bit and some of the questions that they had. And so I think at some point, once we deliver some of this, we would do a more detailed survey to staff to see what's left. But we did tell them we're gonna, the building principals are going to use their input. As far, as far as some of the spaces or procedures after we get through the district ones. Because there are some things within classrooms that we need to talk about. So, they know that they're part of it. But I do think overall, they felt a little bit better at the end of last week, having that opportunity to just have a dialogue, so... So... Next part, huh?
Drum roll.
There's no drum roll. Stop. So, so I need to do some disclaimers here.
Oh.
Because that's all...
Quick talk for the medical.
Yeah, like, I've already answered any questions that I'm able to. So, this is the draft. I wanted to share with the board of what the format and what you can expect to see within the reopen plan. If you're gonna ask me what happens in second grade at Edgerton on Tuesdays at 3 o'clock, that won't be what tonight is about, okay? But I wanted to give you the areas and the sections and what the procedures and the things that we're working on. And, and be able to look at this piece of it. So that, I just wanted to preempt when people say, because some of the board meetings that have been covered, it's like they're unveiling their plan. There's no unveiling. I'm sharing with you the draft and the organization of what it is and the details. And as we promised to parents, to be ready by August 1st. So, we feel like we have a good organization. Our health department is providing us some, some more documents this week that will become a critical piece to our plan. And so the timing for us is, is, we're on pace to have a completed document out to that. We know, however, that after August 1st, we will still be working on procedures. They're not gonna be entirely done. So what lunch recess looks like in an elementary school. There probably will be some procedural things that we're working all the way up until September 1st. But we will have some overall guidelines about what that expectation is. And so just wanted to find out what, so people can understand what level of detail they will be getting at that point. So, I think that's what we need to do, right?
Can you go check on Jonathan?
No, I thought it was a football at first, but Logan ensures me that it's a mask, so... I'm gonna share with you first our table of contents to let you know how we're organizing it. Because there was, we actually did a massive reorganization yesterday as we started out one way in looking at how to organize it. And I think the survey really helped frame for us how we organize our table of contents. Because the number one thing that parents asking about were the health and safety. And then looking at how does some, how will some of the things operate? And then getting to the actual teaching and learning pieces. So, I'll share with you the commitments and how we use some of the feedback and surveys. But, our first section will be on health and safety. So we're going to go through the health and safety protocols that we're putting in place overall. If there is a, a student or a staff member who has contracted the virus, what steps will be placed and the procedures there? What does it look like in school buildings as far as, and I'll give you some examples of that. Of, of bubblers, of visitors, of volunteers, all of those types of things. And then the social and emotional health with all of this, this part of it, about what are we doing? And our pupil services team this week is working on what that looks like. How do we provide a little bit of normalcy? And is that through videos? Is that with our, like, how to do stuff? So, you know, imagine as a, as a, as an elementary student coming back and everybody's got masks on. Because there's a lot of parents who said, my kid hasn't worn a mask yet because they've either stayed within the house, they've had him not out in public. So, for the first time, they come back into a school and, and this is what they're looking at. So the social and emotional health is, is, is a big thing. Under school operations, we want to talk about the transportation. If you self-transport, if you're taking the bus, or if you walk, what does that look like as far as how you get to school? How, how will that look like? We know at most of our schools, there are typically mass gatherings of students before they are let into a building at all of our levels. That, that's not going to be a thing anymore. So what does that look like, what the transport is? Do we have to allocate more time for drop-off or pickup? Because of, we don't want this mass, you know, group of students, you know, in any one area of the building. What about school nutrition? And believe it or not, it's, it's driving a lot of the decisions that we're making right now. And so what does that look like at each of the levels? Serving to where they sit and timing and how that schedule is. So I'll, I'll talk a little bit about the questions we have and where we're, we're going on those. Health services, that is specifically to our health rooms here, not the overall safety and health related to COVID. So, you know, the recommendation of, is there an isolation room? Do we send all kids to the health room now to get a frozen sponge if they fall at recess, which they do now? Instead of ice packs, we use frozen sponges? Yep, that's the progress that we've made. So, I learned that when I subbed, that we use frozen sponges for, instead of ice packs or ice, so, because it drips or whatever. So, we probably don't want to send healthy students into a space where there could be six students, right? Or, if students need to take their medications at the elementary school, again, that all happens right now in our health room. So what are we doing differently in our health room? Attendance. We talked about how we take attendance. And in the timelines of any contact tracing. How do we validate excused absences or not excused absences? And so really talking about attendance policies overall. And then substitute expectations. We know, like every other school district, that there will not be enough substitute teachers to go around. Partly, there's a lot of retired teachers. I'd say about, across the board, about 50% of substitute pools come from retired teachers. They tend to be in a category that may be more high-risk and less willing to come back at that point to, to put themselves at risk. And so, we're looking through procedures about how do we use teachers who might be quarantined but are healthy? Just waiting for either test results or asymptomatic or whatever that might be. To teach virtually, even though the class is here in person. How do we use that because of the substitute pool? The last section is on teaching, learning, and technology. So, the homebound program, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. That's where, what will that look like if a student is in isolation or in quarantine? Or has a underlying health condition as predetermined by a medical professional that needs to be on homebound? Either temporarily for 14 days or whatever that might be, or for a longer amount of time. What goes under teaching and learning? Looking at standards, instruction, curriculum, assessment and grading. Regardless of what model, what will those look like? And, you know, we switched our assessment and grading when we did that. If we anticipate any switching of models this year, you know, we can't continually be flipping. So how do we ensure that whatever we're doing? And those are some of the changes that we're working with our teachers right now. Special education and then students that have a 504 plan or English language students. And then gifted and talented students. How do we work with that? We plan on continuing all of those meetings virtually with parents to, to limit the number of adults coming into buildings. But at any time, we don't know if a family might be in a situation where they are also quarantined and then rescheduling it. So we are going to continue all of those meetings that happen with students that have a plan in a virtual manner. It also, honestly, for some parents, it's been a little bit more convenient to be able to jump on a virtual meeting. Than having to leave work, drive here, attend a meeting, and return. And so our IEP meetings have been relatively successful in that virtual environment. We've had a pretty high participation. What about technology? So the number of devices which you're aware of, so our students 612 are one-to-one. Our students fourth and fifth grade this year will also be one-to-one. But we don't typically have those students take devices home. However, that may be a practice that we start doing, knowing that we may need to flip a switch quickly at any moment. And then what do we do for students K4, K5, 1, 2, and 3? So we need to keep a real close on, you know, tally of those students who have devices or don't have devices. And have one assigned to them somewhere so we could quickly distribute them, even though they're not taking them home. For those who don't have a device at home. And then co-curricular activities, which also includes our outside groups. We have some outside groups that have programming right after school in our elementary schools. And so, the expectations for them is that they would use a lot of the procedures and protocols that we're requiring of our students and staff. Because they will be mingling at the same time. If an outside group wants to use our library at 7:00 PM. That's very different because there's no, there's no mingling with our students or staff. And so, we are looking at, what do we do for the disinfecting piece of it? If it's taking off the cycle, is there a surcharge for that? What does that mean? If it fits in the cycle of when our custodians typically do it, then no. But if it's very different, we may have to look at, you know, either is the outside group expected to do some things? But again, then it's not following up to our standards that we need to ensure that. Athletics are one thing that is, that is a little bit governed, but also some of the other clubs and activities. You know, are we going to continue on? You know, when play practice starts, how do we do that? And so those things, we have a little bit more say-so. So that's the overall structure of how we're gonna have the sections. And in each of those sections, there'll be a procedural document. And I'll show you, I'll give you an idea here in what each of those look like. I'll break it down further, but I wanted to just pause right here when you're looking at the overall structure of what this document will look like.
In a minute.
Okay. First thing I wanted to talk about is the commitments we have to this plan. We have to make sure that things are practicable. Not practical, but practicable, right? That they're actually useful that we're putting in place. And that we can guarantee that there's gonna be a measure of success. If we say that every student, K4 through grade 12, grade 12, will have a mask on every minute that they're here, that is not practicable. So, every procedure that we're putting into place is just not practical. To say that every student and staff member will always be six feet apart, not practicable. It just isn't. And so, those are the commitments that we're trying to do. Is that if we're going to say something, it's something that we can enforce, that we do believe it's something we can do. We're not gonna put something out there that we don't think that we can enforce or that it's not gonna be successful because there's no way we can manage it. Informed, every decision that's in here has not been done in isolation. It's been done with, our local health departments are a key player in this. We're using our feedback from our parents, students, and staff as far as that information. Medical advisors, things that are coming from a variety of things. And understand that that information changes. It has changed throughout this entire time period. And, so we will, we won't just, once we have this plan, say we're good to go now. We will continue to use that. We will continue to monitor how those practices are working and change when we need to. Equitable. We need to make sure that wherever students are coming from, that what the fairness piece is or whatever it may look like is not all the same for all kids. And so how do we? We did that when we took a pause for virtual learning. We needed to make sure that we could get equity there. Whether it was a student who had a specific services that was being delivered, how did they get that? Whether it was GT or special education or English language, is the technology there? And so, you know, family situations. All of those things fall under equitable. So any practice that we put in place, we have to make sure that we're not putting any students in a unfair advantage. Because of a situation that, that we've created through some procedures. And then obviously, safety. When we look at things, decisions that we make, we're going to keep safety in mind for all of them. So those are the commitments to everything that we put together. And it was important to just put those out there by saying, this is the lens from which we're learning, looking at things. Here's what I, and this sort of ties up the parts that we were talking about before. The feedback and surveys. Communication. What we heard from people is that we need to do a better job of streamlining communication. And that is, sometimes I heard from elementary parents, like, we got a lot of information on graduation from you. We didn't really need that. And so, how can the messages that need to go to all families just be all? And then how do we make sure that the buildings from there are carrying it out? And then the classroom teacher? So really great feedback that we got from the survey. And so regardless of what model that we're in, whether it's virtual, in-person, or anything. We will be looking at how can we streamline that when we're messaging things that are, are specific to all parents? What do all parents need to know? And then what needs to come more from the building level that's only relevant to students in that building? The second piece that we grabbed was academic feedback and grading. All of our stakeholders, including our educators, said that more frequent time periods of reporting grades are important. A while ago, we stopped at, we stopped reporting things out at nine weeks. If our parents, and they did, our elementary parents liked that narrative feedback. That needs to come a little bit more frequently to be able to capture what that looks like. We know through our co-curricular plan that we also have to do some reporting of grades for eligibility. And we already put those in place. So across the board, feedback was, we need a little bit more on telling me how my child is doing. Infant campus, except for the high school, does not giving, give this running total, if you will. And so there is no idea, if you will, where is my child at nine weeks? I have no idea where they're falling in types of things. And so, that will be something that we implement across the board, regardless of the model. School day instructors, again, regardless of the model. All of the stakeholders appreciated the weekly plans at the beginning of a week. It helped parents and students plan so they knew. We all know that that helps us for post-secondary education. We all know that that helps us for post-secondary education also, right? That's the biggest thing that you learn in post-secondary education is to manage your time. I've got this project due, I've got this. Right now, when kids get it on a daily basis, it's very hard for them to manage their time or plan. And so, it's an additional skill that we're teaching them, but they came across loud and clear. And the virtual learning platform, the feedback we got from the virtual learning surveys. People appreciated using Google Classroom K-12, so parents didn't have different platforms to worry about. But obviously, it sends tons of messages if you subscribe to that. And it wasn't always clear what class, what child, what time. Sometimes it was a lot of messages you were getting. So, going to a much more robust system that's meant to hold fully online classes and it's used at our post-secondary UW schools seems to make sense. A lot of districts who haven't gone there are making that transition also with us. We're not alone in that decision by any means. So, this is, I wanted to be very specific and let our survey takers know that we don't just look at their surveys and not do anything with that. We take their feedback. And here's four specific things that we use that feedback that we are planning on doing regardless of the model when we look forward. I'll pause here. Really quiet. Okay. So, Model A is in-person, and it's the one that we're moving forward with planning the most, partly because it has the most planning related to physical spaces. There is simultaneous planning going on with the virtual side of things because of Canvas and getting there because we know that that's likely, but our Model A includes some students who will be virtual, so it also has to be in place for that. And obviously, Model C has a little bit of both in there. So, we know that if we can get the physical piece, which has the most logistics involved with it, the other ones will also happen. So, I'm going to share you a few of the things and the conversations that are in the plan. So, under health and safety, these are the three things that we're talking about. So, these are the things that you can expect overall for health and safety. So, face masks. This is a Google Slide presentation. This is what we plan on handing out there. And if people want to look at what we're doing for face masks, they can click on it and it will bring up the procedures for face masks. So, it'll allow you to navigate through this like a table of contents. You can go back to the top. The little link down here, the little, next to the page number will take you back to the main page. So, it's meant to be navigated around, back and forth, and then there will be subdocuments that come off from this. So, if I wanted to see what does it look like for face masks, I would click on that and it would open up. Face masks will be required wherever practical in moving and transitions in the hallways. You know, what that looks like. Our K four, K five students will learn that. It will be a skill that they will be used when they transition in the hallways, but not within the classroom just because it's not practical to keep that on our students. Physical distancing. This is what, you know, it means for our district. And so, the health plan and procedures for students or staff with that, that is coming from the health department right now because there are very specific things as far as contact tracing that they are going to be filling in. If a student or staff member has it, they do case investigation, and they then decide who has had that fifteen minutes of contact with them in the two days prior to symptoms and when they had symptoms. So, they go through an investigation like they're doing now. And so, there will be very specific steps as far as, you know, you need to go and get a test or you just need to monitor or what that looks like. So, that's coming from the health department. I'm trying to differentiate the words isolation as compared to quarantine, and that's a very specific thing. So, the self-quarantine is not really something that exists now. There used to be, if you remember, very early on in this with people traveling to different countries and knowing somebody and that. So, all of this is coming from the health department. We're not making up our own rules now about what we think or what we believe or any of that. It's coming directly from there. So, if the health department contacts you because you were in contact with another adult and they do the case investigation, determine how much contact that is, and they're saying you need to go and get a test. We know that there is sometimes a waiting period to get the test. We know that there's a waiting period to get your test results. And then determining upon those test results, there could be a waiting period that you're asymptomatic, and there also can be a waiting period that if you get the disease or show symptoms of it, there could be another waiting period. So, those all are very fluid into anywhere from one day, one day, to seven days, seven days, ten days, fourteen days. So, there's a lot of variability in the amount of time, and all of that is being led by you're in this state. Today, we talked about our school nurse, who I think I shared with you before, is working for our Hales Corners Public Health Department doing contact tracing during the summer, so is very well-versed in what that case management looks like. Being our onsite medical case management, working with the health departments and sort of what I just described to you so you can imagine if we have more than one case at all times, like I'm on day fourteen and I've now moved into this phase and where are they, and from an attendance purpose, you should be returning to school on this day and just from the health piece of it. And so, that's where, you know, how we manage it and are in. The employee-enhanced health guidelines are going to be recommendations that we're asking all employees to, before they report to work every day, look at these types of things. Have you lost a sense of taste or smell? Are you running a temperature? Are you, you know, all of these things and just doing a self-check and asking them if they feel any of those to then, first of all, report it to HR, but then also, you know, call their physician and see what that looks like if it's not related to any other things, allergies or other viruses that come on, right? That's that whole management of it. The student-enhanced health guidelines, we're going to do a community piece with the Greenfield School District and our two health departments on a community outreach of what, you know, what's appropriate, you know, how do you appropriately put on a mask and take it off? You know, you shouldn't be grabbing it here and all of those types of things. And so, putting together a little community campaign starting in August about what that looks like. So, here's a poster you should put on the door out to the garage as you go in your car every morning and ask, make sure that parents are asking these things of their child before they leave and just keeping a log, you know, and what that looks like. Those three documents are coming from our health department. And then what are we doing to enhance disinfecting protocols? What are we doing as far as, you know, during the day, what are teachers doing with disinfectant bottles and all of that and the letting it saturate and letting it dissolve versus what do we do at night with the entire spray guns in large sections of stuff? So, those are the protocols. So, this first slide, if anybody wants to know the overall protocols that we're following across the board, here's where they would go and get it and can get details. That's sort of the structure for there.
How staffed are, how well-staffed are our health departments?
Yeah, so we, so talking to Jackie, because she oversees as part of our pupil services, our school nurse. And so, we made them move a couple of years, I don't know if it was, I can't remember at what point. All of our health aides in all of our buildings are full-time staffed. And so, that's not the case in a lot of, especially elementary schools. Sometimes your school secretary is the person who's doing a lot of that. So, we are in a good place from school personnel that there's a full-time health aide in each of the buildings. We all, we probably, right now, our school nurse is at halftime, but we are probably going to increase her hours to be able to do some of the health case management and be flexible with some of that. So, from that part of it, I think we're in a good place.
What about municipalities? Are they staffed properly for this?
Oh, yeah, I would say Greenfield is very well-staffed. Work with Abby and Darren every other day. It was weird not to have a meeting with them today. But I think, and Kathy Radloff is the public health official at Hales Corners. I know that they've, so they've added some more contact tracers. In fact, one of our health room aides is also a contact tracer at Hales Corners. So, we have two staff members that work in our health room, and our school nurse that are working there, so have a good there. So, they've added staff to do contact tracing to their health departments, even though that was a part-time position for them also. Yep. So, as long as we're talking about face masks, I know that I'm, you can look at this if you want. These just came in today. And so, we are getting the cloth mask from the state for every student and staff member. But what these are is they're clear shields because we had talked about the importance of seeing facial expressions for all of our staff and what that looks like. So, it's a different type of mask that we will be providing to every staff member. So, we have that piece of it from the communication piece of it. So, just showing you. Yep. It's true. Kevin. If you look up the wingspan of a falcon, if you put two falcons side by side, that's true.
I feel like it's more than that, but okay.
No, it says that. Maybe not flash the falcon, but true falcon. So. So, we are going to practice physical distancing. We know that it's not practicable at a lot of times. And so, we're going to look at hallway traffic in our elementaries, even our middle and high school to try to stagger hallway times so we can try to spread out. Our middle and high school and even our elementaries are looking at traffic that has, goes more one-way rather than having people cross each other whenever possible. And so, I think that that's pretty doable. At the high school, I know that Charlie's talked about having staircases that are down only and some that are up only. So, really getting into those types of things as what we look like for some of that. So, here's some of the school building things that we're looking at, that there will, again, will be a procedure sheet for each of these. So, if you're wondering about entrances and exits, we will be opening up more entrances for drop-off and leaving because right now, because of school safety, we were limiting the number of entrances and exits. But we've talked that now to spread kids out so there aren't, you know, eight hundred and forty high school students all coming through the same doors at the same time in ten minutes. We need to maybe have a separate bus drop-off or separate parent drop-off to try to mitigate what that looks like. Visitors and volunteers, what will that look like? We are going to really, pretty much, I don't want to say eliminate, but not have any volunteers right now. There will be the exception to the rule if there's a situation in which we need volunteers to do some things. I know in some of our elementary libraries, we've had volunteers. So, if it is to just work in the library and not have, we may look at that. But if it's to volunteer in a classroom that's just, you know, helping to hang things up, you know, having adults come in and have lunch with their kids right now, that's going to be on a, no, not need to. And visitors will also be limited. It will be a matter of have to be here physically versus something that could be done in a different way. So, we're still working on some of the things. For example, computer labs, Plexiglas, we're not, you know, don't go out and invest in stock, at least for our place, you know, here. But we are looking at in some of the places where there will be high contact. Our computer labs are some of those spaces and our tech ed space. It's very hard. Kids have to be close to each other. And so, putting some dividers up in some of those spaces that we look at. We're looking at hallways, the traffic that goes with that, outdoor facilities, you know, playgrounds, school forest, anything that looks at what we're looking at related to that. And then facilities, locker usage. So, Hales Corners Elementary has cubbies. They don't have lockers. And so, we're going to have to look very differently at what we do at that elementary because cubbies next to each other when things, belongings are right there is not going to work. So, we have to look at how are we going to have students store their stuff that's theirs? You know, shared school supplies, not going to be a thing. Each kid will probably have their own container or shoebox and not have the communal supplies that we sometimes did. You know, bubblers right now, we're not going to let kids use them. The water fill stations, however, we will. So, capping off and covering those types of things. So, these are some overall facility things that we're going to guide what it looks like in all of our buildings. And you could click on any of these and see what the policies are. So, if I clicked on visitors, it would open up a document that talked about, no visitors will be allowed without, you know, this, this, and this. And it will talk about all of the details that go into that. So, these documents are being worked on right now that go behind each of these. So, anybody will be able to rapidly go to any section that they're interested in and look at those sections. And this is the part, like I said before, our pupil services staff is looking at for social and emotional health. School operations, so some of the sections, again, we're still modifying a little bit, but what does transportation look like? And so, if I wanted to go to any of these, I could click on that and get more details. I'm getting an overview. But if I really wanted to look at that, this is what it looks like. You know, drop-off and pickup, I would imagine that there would be some maps that are linked to that because we're going to have some new potentially drop-off and pickup points for students. At the middle school, we drop-off kids now. The parent drop-off is in the front, but we have them walk around to the main entrance where the parent or where the buses are. I'm imagining we are going to let them in a different entrance now because we don't want to have as many kids crowding in that same entrance. So, there will be maps that you can click on if you're a parent of any level to see what that looks like on new parent drop-off. We're also working on maps within the buildings of where sanitation stations are or where I can go and see what that looks like within buildings or water fill stations. So, if any student or parent or staff member is looking at that, is looking at where they're located with little marks. So, we can look at first floor of the high school. Here's the, oh, there's one there, there's one there, there's one there. And making sure teachers and students have access to those also, so we're very clear on where any of those nearest ones are. School nutrition, so this is something we're working on because it's got a lot of details on how we try to do this. In fact, late this afternoon, and had we put a tour on here, so we may try to schedule that, we have some facilities that we're looking at right now that I think, I mean, our high school, you know, isn't in a good place right now because we did what we did. We were down there today. Does not at all look like. Ceilings are, like, it's crazy. So, I'm excited for you all to see that. The courtyard concrete was filled. So, today, Charlie, Todd, Russ and I, we ordered, Charlie's ordering benches that have a back. But if you've ever seen those, when, if you, so you sit in a bench this way. If you turn around and put your legs through it, the back flips down to be a table surface, actually. Yeah. Yeah. You're going to like the cost, too. Very cheap. So, those will be the, and they're composite, so they will stay out in the courtyard for either a class to bring out there or during the lunch so we can spread students there. We also, this courtyard that's over here, this upper courtyard, had some massive overgrown bushes that had just taken over. So, we removed one of those. We're going to make a space there where other kids could also come and eat lunch outside, but also classes could go. So, we're making that a usable outdoor space that's there. The other side of the cafeteria between the gym and the cafeteria outside there where the construction is, we're going to, there's probably, Todd says it's sixteen feet. I believe him. As far as the space there, we're going to put the concrete that and put more tables out there so either health or fayed classes could come outside if they need to talk to their kids, but also those would be places where we can look at eating. Again, that's not going to happen in December or January, but it does give us some more spaces that when we look at outdoor places that we can take kids here in the high school that just have not been used to their full capacity before. The carpet just came in today. The carpet tiles came in today for the library. And so, we're going to make that space obviously usable. So, we were not originally planning that that multipurpose space would be for eating. But if that becomes the case now, the kids who are not in that eating need a place to be able to go when they're in that opposite time of studying or whatever they're doing. And so, the redesign of the library allows that to be a much more usable space. And so, those are all some great things that we're going to be able to do as we move forward and try to mitigate what those are. So, the school nutrition thing is, you know, working with our school nutrition manager and our principals about what has to happen. We do know that kids will not be eating in classrooms. The food allergies and everything that go with that, public health and everybody's saying that is not a situation that we would not, you can't contain that, and that's, besides the cleaning of the custodial staff having to go in there in the middle of it, the food allergy thing right now makes that just not an option. So. Yeah.
Are we still doing food service for St. Mary's?
I have a question, too, since we're stopping. I'm just wondering, like, if, this might be more of a building principal thing, but looking at like our furniture that we have, I know that things have been trending more towards collaboration and grouping and things like that. Do we know if we're going to move to more of a, like, assigned seating, taking away like the rug time and things like that with kids?
Yeah, I'll get to that when we get to some of the teaching and learning.
Okay, great.
I think it falls into there, yeah. So, health services, this is really about our health room. What happens, you know, about medications? What happens about, is there an isolation room or an isolation space if we have that? What are we doing with shields? Right now, a lot of our staff use the restrooms and health rooms at various times. Sometimes, especially in our elementaries, that's not going to be a thing. It's really only for sick people. We need to, you know, some of those procedures just need to change. So. We are starting to look at, you know, the student absences that I, how do we code that? Sometimes a medically verified doesn't happen right away to get that excuse. What will the public health department be doing when they call you and tell you that you need to take a test in our quarantine because you've had, you know... that you need to take a test in our quarantine, because you've had, you know, that contact? What will be that validation for an absence from school? So those are some of the attendance things that we need to know across the board at all of our schools, and what will that look like? Obviously, looking at truancy, we'll have to be a little bit more lenient, not knowing all of the situations across the board. And yet, at the same time, it's not a free pass for anybody who might feel they're at all a little sick, because we know sometimes getting some of our kids to school already is a challenge. And so we want to make sure that we're not, you know, it's a free for all, anybody can just show up whenever they want. So finding those right things, and working with the health department on what documentation. So if you have an appointment for a test, because there's, and you can't get in right away, like, you should have a validation of an appointment that you've made for that test, somewhere, somehow, in an email or something, when you make, schedule an appointment for that. The substitute expectation, there's something we thought about yesterday, I think, about something that we need to really put in there, about what will that look like? So parents know, we, we want to avoid having adults, you know, in and out and, and whatever. So both Jackie and Todd have been working on, when we have paraprofessionals who have to go to different classes with students, having them have some plexiglass spaces. And a lot of times, they need to, they're helping them side by side. So how do we work with them differently, because they will be in the middle, they, they will be in classrooms to classrooms? So what does that look like? And then our teaching and learning, so homebound program, we will have someone that needs to manage that. That will be, that will be a, a thing unto itself. Like, as soon as you have a situation where you're isolated or quarantined, you are now in homebound for however many days that is. And so you are now using Canvas, and we need to make sure you're attending it, and we need to make sure that you're either logging in to watch live this second grade class, or this chemistry class, or whatever it is. And so it's almost, it is, it's virtual, so it, it's like a virtual school, but there, you know, there are some parts of it that we still have to manage. I think Lynn shared with you that we can look at how long a student is logged in, are they actively engaged when they should have been, all of those types of things. And so when would you get placed into homebound? If you're in isolation, waiting for test results, if you're mandated quarantined by the health department, or if you have an underlying health condition right now that would put you in that situation, that that's how your mode of delivery would be delivered? So this is virtual, just to be clear. Sometimes homebound now, most of the time, it's like packets of stuff until you can return back. This is a virtual option for homebound, because of the amount of time, and we don't, sometimes people will be quarantined that feel totally healthy. So it's not like, you know, you have, you're, you're extremely ill and just can't even think about doing schoolwork. There's going to be a lot more situations where, by their own choice, would be in school, but, but aren't allowed to. And so DPI has a lot of things about what is homebound instruction, what does that include, and how we manage that. So we're, we're, I'm talking with some local districts about collaborating on this, to be able to, to bring our resources together. What if we have a kid in homebound that does AP chemistry, or something like that? And, and it's hard enough, because we have one section, and how, how do we pool some of that stuff together, depending upon the amount of time that somebody might be in there? Someone who's in there for a temporary placement, probably not as big of a deal as somebody who's in there because of an underlying health condition, and might be in there for a semester, or the year, not knowing what it looks like. What, how do we provide them the quality instruction that we need to? And so we talked about standards, curriculum, instruction, assessment and grading, and some courses that we are still figuring out. How does this impact the curriculum and standards that are typically in our performing arts class? Music, singing, instruments, what does that look like in a tighter space? You know, there's been a couple marching bands that started, you know, six feet apart on the football field. That's pretty easy to do. Some of them have already shut that down, that had started that for various reasons. Fayad, what are we doing in Fayad? Are we just not using balls where kids are touching it? Are we trying to do, are we keeping kids in pods, like our WIA guidelines say to do? Just no weightlifting, you know, rooms, or what does that look like? Science labs, and some of the career and tech classes, what are we doing to protect those kids? And how does that implement the standards in that course, or learning targets that kids were supposed to do? Are the way we have to teach right now so compromised that the learning targets can't be accomplished? Or we just have to be creative about the way that we do it, or have kids rotate through? Student services are special education, GTEL 504, students that have different plans. How do we provide those services, no matter what model we're in, and if we're fluid in and out of them? Students who might have an IEP, all of a sudden, they go virtual. How do we ensure that their services and minutes that they have are happening, and then they come back face to face? GT student, how do we make sure that, that those same level of services are happening, regardless of which model? Talked a little bit about the devices that we look at. So these are some placeholders for things that we have to work through. And then before and after school care, those, the, the programs that come in, what does that look like? Community groups, non-athletic activities, and then where WIA finds itself. And then our virtual model and our hybrid model, those are going to be taking components of that. So I'm going to go back to the table of contents and pause. Within classrooms, Todd is working with principals to talk about, we need to, you know, the, the paper on the walls that we have, if we're disinfecting and it has to saturate every night, and it has to dry, like, we need to limit the amount of paper on walls, or that's out, or any of those types of things. Spaces that we've had before. We will have teacher-only spaces, used by painter's tape, that this is the teacher-only space, that students can't enter that. It could be around their desk, not all teachers have desks, whatever that is. And so they will work on that. And so within classrooms, we want to look at what that is. We know in our K4, K5, we're going to have kids in smaller pods within that classroom, and those kids get to play with this set of toys on this day, and they get to play with this playground equipment on that, so we can try to contain it within there. But to say that kids have to be six feet apart, we can't. So part of it is trying to mitigate and using cohorts of students to do things as much as possible. And, and that's the way, rather than, you can't be six feet apart. Some of our spaces don't have enough space to have kids in them to be six feet or three feet apart. I'll pause. Questions either on the plan, or I guess, anything?
So one question. So looking forward to doing five days a week. So is there going to be parts in there and talking with the health department when we have to flip the switch to other things?
So that, between.
Trying to find that, or is that just?
Yeah, so between masks and that question, it's the number one question we keep asking, to see what has changed. Right now, they're telling us that they're going to treat it like any other communicable disease. As far as what they do for contact tracing, who needs to be out? They don't anticipate closing a school down. But alone, typically, it's the health department that closes it down due to an outbreak of anything. It's not a school. So there could be conditions where we have so many staff out who are sick with it, that we can't do that, and that would be a decision, I guess, that we would make. But they don't anticipate closing a building. There could be an entire classroom of third graders out, there could be, you know, whatever that looks like. But then, would we just flip that third grade classroom, that they're all virtual, including their teacher? So I think that that's yet to be seen, you know, we're still sitting six weeks out from starting school, six or seven. And so what that looks like is really, you know, would they? I think they're a little bit nervous on making that call, because there's not an exact number. Every district is different, their buildings are structured different. You know, what we do to contain kids is different from other districts. And so I don't, I don't see them really coming in and doing that.
Yeah, so I know this is our plan, and nothing ever seems to work out as it should. But are we, I know we have the training and all the stuff we're doing, the PD days now. Is there going to be a focus on making sure that, should we have to flip that switch again? That it's not a, I'm not ready for this, it's, I've got, I know exactly what I'm doing, and it's seamless? And how is that going?
Yeah, so that's a non-negotiable, to be virtual for everybody. And so we've talked about, you know, and I understand it, believe me, you know, teacher, none of us want this. We're all in a dual, like, nobody's asked for this, and so we have to understand this. But we also have to understand, you know, let educators know the urgency of that, that we have to plan for both models. And I get it, that it, it might be like, what if I'm here, what if I'm there? I understand that, but it's also the reality of the situation. And I think, as I've shared, at least administratively, and rightly so, that we absolutely have to be ready to go virtual. There is not, there's no buffer, there's no pause, there's no anything right now. And so the training that teachers will be asked to do on Canvas this summer, and all of that, that, that's not a, well, if I get around to it, I will, it's a have to. And when we held our PD time, so last week at session A and session B this week, it's virtual, so we're not making them come in, you know? But it is time that was part of their contract, you know, from August, so we just traded a day. It is likely that there may be the, the time that it takes them to learn Canvas and get up, and whatever expectation that is, and we've talked about compensation for that time. So we recognize that if it's more time that they didn't plan, but it's also not a no thank you. Or just some of the teachers who got around to it, do it. Like, as a system, we have to be ready, because that flipping a switch could happen on August 31st. And tomorrow, we're virtual. I mean, none of us know what that is. We're going to continue to, you know, I think the numbers over the last few days were pretty alarming to a lot of people, what that means. And I'm not going to get into data, or, or any of that. But I'm just saying, I think as we look at it, how does that relate to what we're doing, or what we're not doing? I think we're all over the place on that. We continue to learn more about the virus, and we continue to use that information. But if it gets to that point, and things start to, like, to the point that it's, like, gatherings, right? Because remember, some of those gatherings, depending upon what phases we were at, that would, that would significantly limit what we're doing. If you look at the WIA plan, it's got different, if you're at high risk, moderate risk, low risk, and what those look like, and, and we're sort of in and out of that. A lot of the, the, the schools that have started that, they have switched the risk level while they've already started, and they've had to all of a sudden switch back to their next plan. So we're at moderate risk, which means we can do this. Their area has switched to high risk, and now they've had to, all of a sudden, the next day, the athletes and the coach have had to all of a sudden mod, go to the next plan. So they have, they've had to, sort of, if you will, and I think that's why a lot of people were looking at WIA as a way of, how do you move in and out of different plans based on the risk? And how do you change, and all of that? And, and now that students are, you know, allowed publicly to gather, what is happening with, with some of that?
If I can go branching out that, we have all of our coaches. Are we looking to expand coaching into virtual learning coaching for the future, I guess?
For athletics, you mean?
No, not, not, I mean, for, like, we have a math coach, a literacy coach, and just coaches that help our teachers become better. Are we going to look to expand a role in that sense to make you a better virtual teacher? Should that be more of a thing? Or if we have this every year, where we've got kids that are in the quarantine because of that, that we've got someone who is in a perfect position to handle that situation and to coach others?
Yeah, so I think part of the reason, and the, the earlier proposal that you approved is, one of the things that we had talked about is that I think Todd Stacey before had a multitude of duties, and because of that, we've really said, this has to be your focus on what you're doing right now under digital learning. Like, there's so much under technology that you could be doing, but I think we recognize the importance. So he, that is his primary focus right now. As you know, he was a classroom teacher in our district for a long time, so really brings that with him. But we need him, you know, to talk about that. And, and as Lynn looks at, you know, what are good practices to be a virtual, to, to teach in a virtual world? I think, you know, it, it takes a year to prepare, if you're going to ever teach a class. And it's not something you flip a switch on, it really isn't. So how do we continually build the capacity of teachers? I think it makes you a better teacher, regardless of which things. And I think there was a lot of great learning that our teachers had by going virtual. I think, you know, some of the comments is like, oh, I had to really stop and think, or maybe I assumed, because they were sitting in a classroom, that they heard it, but now I had to rely on some other things to realize that maybe they really didn't understand it. So I think that that's, that was an intentional place from there. Beyond there, I think we look at other roles that maybe could, looking at building the capacity of our other coaches, and looking at good instruction, what that looks like, either virtually or in person. Some of those are very transferable skills.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
What's the most difficult part about this plan for you guys? What's been the biggest lynchpin?
Why wasn't Lynn answering that? She was giggling over there.
I think it's the constantly shifting base of information that we're trying to base all the decisions on. I have my favorite analogy of trying to do yoga on a water bed, where you know what you're supposed to be doing, you know a pose, you kind of hold it, but underneath your feet just keeps doing this. And so even though you know what you're supposed to be doing, trying to get there is.
You can plan the plan, but you can't plan the outcome.
I think we're used to having some variables and some uncertainty, but I think why it's so exhausting is we're not getting a lot of guidance from other people at all. And, you know, those aren't our areas, we're not medical people to know about this. And so the decisions that we're making, there's, there's a wide range of, you know, people in education typically look at research and what, what is to be. And I think right now, that's not clear to any of us. And so we take this, the, the, the health and safety of our students very seriously, and getting at what is, to make those decisions is really hard right now. So balancing the, the physical, social, emotional health of students, the academic learning, and the uncertainty of, of where that is, is just, it's very daunting. You know, and I hear that through some of our parents. And I think we have great parents here, and I think a lot of them really understand, and some of the comments, like, we understand you're in a no-win situation. Like, I, I think people who recognize it, because, because there's no win in any of this, right? Nobody wants to be taking the risk. My job is to mitigate risk for the district. No matter what we do, it's always to mitigate risk. I look at the, is that, is that a risk we need to take? What's the level of risk? And this is a really unknown risk, right? And yet, I know that that academic progress and social, emotional health of our students is also not in a great place. So the external pressures sometimes that are unrealistic about what it is, and that, that's at different levels. But I also don't like the politicize, politicize, politic, can't even say it, politicization of what, of, of this decision. It isn't a political decision. And I don't like it being turned into a political decision, because I don't make decisions based on politics. So it weighs very heavily on all of us about what is the right decision to make. So it consumes every waking moment, I think, right now of any administrator. As we're talking to them at any level of what we're doing, it is just constantly there, because there is no win in it, in the uncertainty.
I think what you have put together is very impressive and very well thought out. I think you've hit a lot of things that, what we think about at home, don't even occur to us. And just, I, I think you, your team has done a tremendous job, everybody, getting in on this, and getting the staff on board, communicating, and making the district as a whole kind of come together around this, so that it can be rolled out.
It's a very good single source of information. I find it hard to see somebody coming to this and saying, well, where can I find this or that? It's like, it's all there, it's in one source. You're not going anywhere other than here to get it, which is great.
Yeah, I expect that it'll be helpful for people to get a little more of a picture of the direction. You know, even if it's not all, you know, a hundred percent known at this point. But I think that just seeing the framework and getting some of those details filled, filled in will inspire a lot of confidence as we start to think about coming back.
So we end.
So August 1st, or August?
Does it, that's exactly where I'm. That's exactly where I was going, I was gonna say, so the plans are to get out, you know, the details and have links there by August 1st. We know then that our buildings will have their net, then they will, this is sort of here, here's the whole thing. And then buildings will pick up from there, I would guess, in the first few weeks of August, they will take on what you need to know from the building level. And then, I think you will also, from, the classroom teachers will eventually pick up as you need to know from the classroom level. So we have this overarching piece, then you can start to know, hey, at my building, what does this look like? And then when I get down to my classroom teacher, what does it look like for art class now or whatever? So I think that it's the first wave of it, but it sets the parameters about. So, you know, I know parents might, they get this, like, what does it mean for my second grader when they, that will eventually come, but we need to start it for these overarching, have an idea of what it looks like.
Just thank you for everything you and your team have done. I don't think it has been said enough for all the hours and effort you've been putting in, you know, putting in. I think it's just, uh, what you have already speaks for itself, how much you've done so far, not just for us and the Whittaker School District, but all the extra work you're doing and everything, so very much appreciated. And I think, uh, I'm glad we have such a robust communication plan in place that you did, and I think we're going with what the public clearly and overwhelmingly wants us to go with and taking the necessary precautions, so thank you very much.
I mean, a great administrative team, I mean, and our whole reopen committee right now, I mean, all of them are working, you know, just being able to delegate those things and working and walking around and, and spending the time in those areas. And so I don't feel like anybody on there is not, I mean, they're all dedicated to making sure this is the very, and they're what if, what if, and they're continually asking questions about, like, well, have we thought about this? How do we do this? And so taking it very seriously, you know, they always say that people come together more when there's crises, right? And, and you need to really figure out what it is. And so right now, you know, we don't have those missing links that, that I wished, oh, shoot, there's nobody that's looking at that. Everybody, I feel, is sort of asking those questions and making sure that we don't have any holes in, in what we're doing.
Anybody else? Thank you, Lisa. That's on the agenda? Future consideration?
Oh.
Items for future consideration?
Items for future consideration? Announcements?
I can read the next thing if you want.
Go ahead.
Entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.851C, comma, 1F, and 1G. Two, A, discuss superintendent evaluation, and B, review and consider the findings and conclusions of an initial and supplemental investigation and recommendations by leave of counsel related to complaint regarding conduct toward individual school district employees. Take a motion.
Send it.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote?
Uh, discussion. Uh, I thought I saw an email that we are not going to, uh, work on A.
I think the only thing we were going to discuss for A was, um, just going over and kind of a refresher of how we do the evaluation program, but not actually get into any of the details of it.
Okay, good. All favor?
Roll call vote.
Roll call. Karen?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Jessie?
Aye.
Steven?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Jonathan? Six. Okay.
Can we take just a short?
We're gonna take a five-minute break?
Yep.
Thank you.